Hello, everyone. Welcome to the July 2nd regularly called meeting of the City Council. Ms. Hilbert, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Delgarza.
I am present.
Councilman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young.
Here.
Councilman Lockard.
Here.
And Mayor Crocker.
Here. If you please rise and join me for the pledges and a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Again, welcome, everyone. We will roll right into our Item B. Number one is announcements and reminders. Mr. Garza, how are you this evening?
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. We do have a few announcements and reminders for this evening. All non-emergency city offices will be closed on Thursday, July 4th in observance of Independence Day. Offices will reopen at 8:00 a.m. on Friday, July 5th. Trash, yard waste, and recycling scheduled for Thursday will be collected as usual. The Victoria Public Library will be closed on July 4th and reopen at 9:00 a.m. on July 5th. The Summer Fund Friday in Queen City Park will not occur this Friday, July 5th. Additionally, on behalf of the Parks Department, we want to invite the residents to our bicentennial 4th of July blastoff this Thursday, July 4th, activities starting at 7:30 a.m. with a 5K, so I hope to see everyone out there for that. There'll be events throughout the day at the zoo and at our duck pond. And then in the afternoon at 4:00 p.m., we'll begin our formal event for the evening with live music and then fireworks at 9:00 p.m. To see the map and schedule of events, please visit victorietx.gov/parks. On behalf of CBB, we want to remind the public that applications for the City of Victoria's Annual Hold-to-Locumency Tax Funds Awards for fiscal year '25 will close on Wednesday, July 31st. Informational workshops for potential applicants will be held at 700 Main Center and Conference Room 205 on Monday, July 8th, 15th, and 22nd. For application forms and more details, please visit victorietx.gov/business or contact our Convention Visitors Bureau and directly ask for Joel at 361-485-3117. And lastly, I know there's been quite a bit of coverage on Hurricane Barrel, and so I want to make the comment that as the National Hurricane Center continues to issue advisories for major hurricane Barrel as it moves across the Caribbean Sea, there remains considerable uncertainty in its track and intensity forecast after Barrel enters the Gulf of Mexico on Friday. Although it's still too early to determine direct impacts on South Texas, all interests in South Texas should continue to closely monitor the forecast and ensure their preparedness plans are in order. We will continue to share information for the duration of the storm on our city's website at victorietx.gov, on our social media, and we also encourage folks to visit our City Alerts Center on our webpage. We remind the public to sign up for our alerts at victorietx.gov/newsroom by clicking City Alerts. There, residents can opt into receiving weather alerts, road closures, and news releases. In addition, residents should sign up for Victoria Office of Emergency Management Code Red Notification System by texting ALERTVICTORIA to 99411. Again, that's texting ALERTVICTORIA to 99411.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garza. Moving on then, Item B2A, we have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. Ms. Hilbert, will you help me out, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Victoria, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's; whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles; and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a space, a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month; and whereas Victoria, Texas recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation's resources. Now, therefore, I, Dwayne Crocker, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For nearly 40 years, the National Parks and Recreation Association has celebrated this month to promote building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of Parks and Recreation. This month is dedicated to recognizing and celebrating the more than 160,000 full-time Parks and Recreation Professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time workers, seasonal workers, volunteers, many of whom maintain our country's local, state, and community parks. This year's theme is "Where You Belong," and it celebrates the many ways Parks and Recreation Professionals across the country foster a sense of belonging in their community by welcoming inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe, accessible spaces to build meaningful connections. Thank you so much. Thank you for supporting our parks.
Moving on then, Item 2B is the Keep Victoria Beautiful July Business Beautification Award. Ms. Euchre.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before we give our award away today, I wanted to just reemphasize what Mr. Garza said, that we'll be running our regular routes on our garbage and all of our waste collection on the holiday, on July 4th. And secondly, on that note, we are working to get the word out about proper recycling in Victoria. And so one of the things I wanted to highlight is what we do recycle in your green recycle bin, and that is cardboard, paper, plastics 1 and 2, and aluminum and tin. And do not put plastic bags in there, even though plastic bags are technically recyclable. Not in our bins. They get stuck in the machinery. So a lot of people bag their recycling, like recycling, thinking that will help, but just dump it in there all by itself. So just a little tip for everybody today. And now I'd like to bring up our Keep Victoria Beautiful Board Chair, Meredith Byrd, to present our July Award.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, our award winner for July is Puddleback Gifts and More. This is a cheerful little gem of a place down on South Bridge Street and certainly deserving of our monthly award. So back in 2015, Nina Mylum was, had dropped her daughter off at the Victoria Art League for a class and drove by a building with a "For Sale" sign. And she had already had her own business for a number of years by then and decided to pursue purchasing this building, which had been built in 1910. I think it had served as a home, had survived floods in the past. And she was able to purchase the building, went to work giving it a huge facelift while still retaining many of the original elements. And so if you are, the next time you're driving down, way down on South Bridge, like approaching the Art League, Water Street down there, take a look at this. It's a, the property is super cute, very cheerful, very bright. It really just draws you in. And so tonight, we are very happy to give this award to Nina Mylum of Puddleback Gifts and More.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I've been there for nine years, and we actually are starting, if you've been by on the corner of Bridge and Water Street, if anybody knows where La Paloma is, you know, everybody kind of does, we are going to be opening also, our next venture is a brick oven pizza. So we're kind of keeping everything down there, you know, bringing it back alive. So I would stay longer, but I have a new helper working, and this is her first time by herself. So I'm kind of like, I'm kind of nervous because, like I said, she's only 17, and she's been manning the store now for about 35 minutes, and the phone is off. So I'm kind of like, okay, thank you very much. So I hope to see y'all there. Thank you.
Somebody get the door for her. Mr. Garza, I understand you may have another public and employee recognition for us?
Yes, sir. I want to take a minute to publicly recognize one of our municipal court clerks, Tara Tenney.
Where are you?
Thank you. Please rise. She recently earned her Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice Administration from the University of Phoenix. Through this program, she gained a fundamental understanding of the criminal justice system, studied criminology, community policing, and change management, and developed relevant administrative skills. She began working for us in February of 2023, and she has already, in that short time, completed the City Civilian Police Academy and Civilian Responder Program. She is also certified as a Child Passenger Safety Technician through the Texas Department of State Health Services Safe Riders Child Passenger Safety Program. And she holds a Level 1 Clerk Certification from the Texas Courts Clerk Association in conjunction with the Texas Municipal Court's Education Center. And so we want to publicly applaud her for her investment in her own professional and educational development. And as always, right, we greatly appreciate all of our employees investing in themselves because we all benefit from that. And so Tara, thank you so much for that.
Any other items?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Then I'll move on to Item 3, which is Items from Council. Does anybody have anything? I just had one, and I probably could have done this under the proclamation, but I know, just kind of a shout out to the Parks and Rec staff. I know you guys have a busy week, to say the least, but very excited about the plans for 4th of July holiday. And hopefully, everyone can get out and check it out. There's really, truly is something for everyone going on all day into the evening. So thanks for your hard work on it. Looks like a great lineup, and hopefully, everybody can get out and enjoy that. All right then. If there's no other items from Council, then we'll move on to Citizens Communication. I have a few cards, and we'll start with Jennifer Perez. Welcome, Ms. Perez.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Perez, and I'm a citizen of Victoria, Texas. I understand that the pensions of our law enforcement, fire, and public safety will be facing deductions that vary across the board depending on the individual. I do not support this proposal for three reasons. Our first responders and public safety employees play vital roles in our community. These individuals have built relationships to gain trust, offer protection, investigate crime, help to maintain order, and serve as a presence of peace and hope to our community. Second, these individuals sacrifice their lives, their time, their heart, their minds, and self in and out of their uniforms, and we should honor them. Third, our law enforcement, fire, and public safety employees represent what Victoria, Texas, is all about. Their morale, leadership, and integrity are an example to our neighboring counties. At this time, I believe that all of that is being tested, and taking away from their future pensions to give them a current raise will surely complicate things and make matters worse. The decision to pass a disrespectful approach to a long overdue adjustment to pay comes with little consideration for these men and women. I do not like it, and I don't agree with it, and I'm confident in saying neither will a large population of the residents in Victoria, the individuals who trusted you with their vote. This will encourage law enforcement, fire, and public safety to pull their retirements to go to other cities that value their work and offer better pay, allowing seasoned employees the option to just leave by believing that they can just be replaced is a foolish idea. And I'm here to remind you that to believe that any of them is replaceable speaks volumes about the mindset of our leaders regarding the heroes of our community. Please, I urge you, do better by our law enforcement, fire, and public safety because when you do, you're doing better by us, too. When you know what you need to do, but you don't do it, we call that foolish. But I trust that you will reconsider your proposals to find a better solution so that Victoria can honor these employees for their valuable work. My prayer is that each of you would soften your heart and open your minds to conduct the business for the betterment of the future of our community. I trust that you will do the right thing. I was born and raised in Victoria, and I have lived here my entire life. I can remember Victoria from when the future site of the public safety headquarters was still considered a flood zone before the elevation was changed. I love my community, and I want others to love our community. However, the decisions today and in the days to come will have an impact on what the future of our growing city will look like. Thank you all for your service and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Kim Pickens. Welcome back, Ms. Pickens.
Always good to be here. Thank you. Good to see you, Mayor and Council. For those who don't know me, I am Kim Pickens. I am known by many, wearing many hats. I'm here today as the current president of the Homeless Coalition, where I would like to just remind for those who don't know that the Coalition is made up of all the organizations across Victoria and the counties that we surround or surround us to help people who are homeless with services. That includes everyone from Midcoast to Community Action to churches, local churches, and things like that. So we have a far reach. We go from Gonzalez all the way to Rofirio to Goliad. I mean, we're, we surround and we work with people all across. So what I would like to just say is that while the city is a part of our meetings, it is the development, City Development Department, and what we would like is to reach across and actually come up with policies and procedures that work with all the city departments and also reach out to the county because we have people right now that we know are, I mean, they're suffering right now. This heat, the thing is, I have a pregnant mother. I just went and visited and gave her a gift card so she can get something to eat. She's pregnant with twins, and she's sleeping, and she asked me for a sleeping bag. I'm like, I, we've got to do better. The thing is, we want to work with the city. We're not trying to. We can't do things without you guys. The thing is, there needs to be a partnership, a real partnership with all of the organizations. So I would suggest that we will, we will meet on the last Thursday of each month. We took a break in May and June. We will be back in action on the, at the end of July. But if any of you individually would like to meet, because I realize that, you know, open meetings can sometimes be a little bit difficult, but if you have questions individually, I am more than happy to answer questions and meet with people one-on-one. Like I said, we have, we've got to do something different. We have a lot of people, and it's not just the people that we see panhandling. It's not just the people in Queen City Park. We have people all across the city that are homeless, sleeping in cars, sleeping in hotels, like I said, doing what they can just to survive. And surviving is not, is not the way that we, that we need to have our citizens be. We need for them to thrive. So I'm just asking for us all to work together, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickens. Trish Hastings.
I feel like I haven't been here for a while.
I was gonna say, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm here as the former director of Christ Kitchen and a community health worker and a member of the Homeless Coalition. I wanted to spotlight two specific cases of homelessness right now that I need help with. Have a young woman, victim of domestic violence, done everything right. She's sober. She's working hard to be productive. The shelter is full. Took her to Midcoast. There is no housing available. We have applications in, but she doesn't have anywhere to go. She has no family. I don't know how to advise her. I'm not looking to you for answers, but help. If we could sit down and come up with a plan, that would be perfect. Also, I have another gentleman. He's been, he's done everything right, too. He's had his, he's been to Gulf Bend. He's got his, had his diagnostic appointment. He has done his Midcoast Family Services applications, and his caseworker quit this week. So now he has to start all over, and he's on the street. I don't know what to do. Can we visit, sit down? Andrew, where's your district? Can we sit down and have a discussion on, at least a brainstorming session on where to proceed now? Because I don't like the way Christ Kitchen looks, and I know you don't. Where can they go? Connie didn't choose to be homeless. She got beat up and put out, and there's nowhere to go. It's heartbreaking, but I don't know what to do. So I'm appealing to you to help. Dwayne, you know my number. So, sorry, Mayor.
Dwayne's fine.
Please call me. We really would love to get together and work on solutions, and I thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Hastings. Michael Von der Oo. Good evening, Mr. Von der Oo.
Good evening, Attorney Dwayne and City Council. There's a problem with high grass. I'm Michael Von der, 2204 East North Street. There's a problem with high grass right by Queen City Park. It's on 2307 Cameron. The grass is like six to seven foot high, and, you know, code enforcement wrote them up, and they still choose not to take care of it. So I guess I need to sick the fire marshal on them, you know, because that is a fire hazard. And also on 60, it's on 607 Parks Street, 607 Parks Street, right by Queen City Park, where they just mowed it. And then on 2307 Cameron, there's a bunch of couches and a bunch of debris, and that's been there for several months. And is any way someone like from Solid Waste Disposal could pick it up? You know, maybe they can't afford to move it and stuff because I know I have a lot of rubbish, and they pick it up twice free per year, you know, and they don't. I just talked to Darryl, and it gets taken care of. And then someone laid some plywood with some nails all the way through it on the median by A1 Cars. And I want to thank Ken, the Director of Public Works, for taking care of it. And also, the Director of the Parks and Recreation, they gave some free popsicles, you know, to the people at Christ Kitchen. I realize that's not enough, but at least it's an olive branch, you know, just to help. But I would like people to start mowing and taking care of everything like they're supposed to. And also on the parks, there's a curfew from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. If you're on there, you can get arrested or ticketed. I think a lot of people don't know the rules or what have you, and I just would like someone to tell people the rules. And also, if you have a trespass warning, that means you can't go there for like one year. You can't like go to jail, someone binds you out, and then go back at the same place. Or you could get arrested. I know the police, I appreciate what they're doing. They're enforcing the rules more, and I appreciate everything everyone's doing. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Von der Oo. And then the last card I have is Mr. Harley Fisk. Good evening, Mr. Fisk.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and interested citizens. I want to start this by saying that because I am on several organizational boards that these are personal opinions, have nothing to do with any of the boards that I'm on. Many of you might be old enough to remember the Andy Griffin Show. For the benefit of those younger people who didn't see the show, it was about a small-town sheriff and his deputy. It was a character who had a tendency to drink too much. I think his name was Otis. His drinking problem was such that he spent many nights in jail, so many, in fact, that the sheriff just left the jail door open so that Otis could let himself in at night, let himself out in the morning. Right? It was a small town, right? This was a comedy, right? I can't see that happening in real life today. But if we make a decision to criminalize homelessness, we be setting up ourselves to create a revolving door to our jail. An unhoused person might be given a ticket which they can't afford to pay. Because they can't pay the ticket, they might be jailed or fined. They're jailed, we put additional stress on an already stressed system. They're fined, and they still won't be able to pay, and they may still end up in jail. I know Chief Young would rather not have to ticket, fine, or jail people who have nowhere to go, right? I'm sure he can find a lot of other, better things to do with his time, right? I am not smart enough to know what the answers are for solving the complicated issues that surround unhoused peoples, but these are citizens, right? They deserve that we do our best to help them. And as the saying goes, "There but for the grace of God go I," right? Turning them into criminals makes it more difficult for them to find housing, get jobs, and become more productive members of our community. I think that we need to work together to see what we can do to alleviate the problems associated with homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. All right. That will conclude Citizens Communication, and so then we will move into Item C, which is Items of Public Hearings. Item C1.
Item C1 is an ordinance emitting Chapter 21, the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Victoria Code of Ordinances.
Good evening. I promise this is going to be the last time you'll see me for a while on this subject. As you may remember, we did, FEMA is adopting new maps in July, and Ken and I sent our proposed changes to FEMA in April, and no news is good news, you think, right? you think, right? So we brought our amendments forward last time. They were approved, and then two weeks ago FEMA sent us an email and said, "No, we have some more changes." So that's really what's prompted tonight. And of course, as we're using the ordinance, we started using it June 1st, full effect, we are finding some clarification items. So there's no big, real substantive changes tonight, but I will go through them quickly. So the first is to clarify that the residential parking exemptions apply to properties that don't require commercial site plans. So multifamily has to follow commercial parking standards, but these are exceptions or easier parking standards for residential parking. And so that's your single family, but it could also include two-family, three-family, fourplexes, things of that nature. We realized that we actually had a conflict in our driveway ordinance, so we had instructed the consultant to pull our existing driveway ordinance over to the new UDO because it worked really well for us. They had actually already proposed some changes and proposed a separate driveway ordinance, so we had some conflicts between our access management, mainly throat depth, driveway whiffs and things. So we actually liked the format of the consultant's better, because it was in tables that were easy to read, but we liked our old rules better because they were more lenient. So these next sections are really just to clean that up, and it doesn't actually change what we had in our Just to clarify, this applies to all roadways. And of course, text regulation still apply to state-maintained roadways in addition to ours. And nine times out of 10, text regulations are more restrictive than the city's. So these are all sections that all were caveats located elsewhere, and then we completely deleted the sections where they were listed elsewhere, so we didn't have a conflict. This is the one change that is kind of substantial, and it's actually reducing the regulations. So now the ordinance is adopted under zoning authority. If landscaping dies, we can pursue the replacement of that landscaping through municipal court, if the landscaping is required for the development. And so there are some cases, it really comes up anytime there's infrastructure-type developments, like AT&amp;T's putting in boxes, or AEP puts in substations, where there's existing trees maybe that they're using for credits, and they don't really need irrigation. And so this would allow us to waive those irrigation requirements in those instances. So the alternative would really be hand watering, or bringing a truck to water until the vegetation's established, if it's, if that's even necessary. But most often, in our climate, it's not even necessary. This is an exemption in our Texas Local Government Code that we changed from five acres in the code to 10 acres to align with the county, but we left off the rest of the definition out of the Texas Local Government Code, so we needed to fix that. That was our intent, of course, but we just needed to really spell it out. And these are the floodplain requirements, or changes that FEMA requested. So the flood insurance study is for the entire county, not within this, specifically just the city, so it's a title. They have a new form that they wanted us to reference. Again, a new form. And then they also were concerned that we didn't include all foundation types. Really, the only one I can think of is basement. I did not want to write basement foundation types in a floodplain ordinance in South Texas, so we just put any other foundation types, but that did satisfy them. And then they asked for this additional language. And those are all the proposed changes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fulgham. Any questions? I think most of these were driven by FEMA, at least the latter part, in terms of their review. And I think we've caught most of the cleanup and
Fingers crossed.
Hopefully, yes, on sections. And we knew, we knew it was coming, so, you know, we appreciate the work y'all put into it. So, any other questions? All right. I believe, then, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing on Item C1. Anyone who wishes to speak on this, please come to the mic. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on Item C1 and entertain any motions from the dice.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We've got a motion to adopt in a second. Is there any further discussion on Item C1? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, C1 is adopted. We will then move into Item D, the Consent Agenda. Ms. Hilbert.
Item D1 is the adoption of minutes of the regular meeting held on June 18th, 2024. Item D2 is a resolution approving an annual supply contract with Thornton, Musso, and Bellman Incorporated for TMB 1160 in an amount not to exceed $278,622.72. Item D3 is a resolution approving an annual supply contract with Thornton, Musso, and Bellman Incorporated for TMB 471C in an amount not to exceed $139,177.92. Item D4 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Penco Incorporated for liquid ferris chloride in an amount not to exceed $114,312. Item D5 is a resolution approving the renewal of the annual supply contract with Polidine Incorporated for wastewater sludge dewatering polymer in an amount not to exceed $61,065.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hilbert. Move to accept the consent agenda is read?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the consent agenda. I will just make this comment before we vote, that, and I commented on a meeting with Mr. Garza earlier, that I think we're seeing our cost of treating our water over the last several years, and, you know, the additives we have to do to clean it just going, skyrocketing through the roof. And I think this consent agenda is a clear example of that, and we just gotta do what you gotta do, so.
House to do business.
So we've got a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Moving on then, Item E1.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to purchase right-of-way for the Briggs Boulevard-Spring Creek Bridge reconstruction.
Mr. Gill, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. See if I get the right button. Yes, this is the Spring Creek and Mallett and Brigg, not Mallett, Spring Creek and Briggs Boulevard Bridge Reconstruction. Kind of go over an overview of how it began, and following that, the rest of the, the rest of the story. The bridge, TechStop does bridge inspections every other year, and they do about half of our bridges and the other half. And they do this as a federal program for the counties and the cities and off-system. They inspect them and they give a rating. Briggs and Spring Creek was inspected in 2021, and it got a structural rating of 34.3. At that point, that's below the 50, which is the qualification for an off-system bridge improvement. We also had to low-post it at that time. The Yocum Office submitted the bridge for its off-system bridge program, and it was accepted in 2022. The first construction estimate for the bridge was 2.4 million, later revised after preliminary design to four and a half million. Prices have gone up since then. In November of 15th, we did a, we presented a resolution to City Council to proceed with the project with a 10% match of the construction cost, based off the construction estimate of 2.4 million. The amended, then we came back, TechStop talked to their group and the federal government, said, "Hey, you know what? We're going to fund the whole thing." So we got to waive our 10% construction match, and that was done in February 6th. What are the improvements? Here's an overview, a snapshot of the aerial and the right-of-way that's needed. It's, as you can see, it starts at that second driveway. It's a kind of a gravel last driveway to Citizens Health Plex. That's where the actual construction of the roadway and the bridge improvement starts. And it goes across Spring Creek, and it ends right at the driveway to Dr. Nguyen, which is the old Patty Welder house. What are the improvements? It's basically they're reconstructing the road from that point, from the driveway, all the, from driveway to driveway, widening the bridge, widening the road a little bit, and it's a longer structure. What we found underneath that is, there's a short bridge, and then back in the day, probably in the 50s, they put railroad tank cars in. That was a great option back in the day. They'd cut the ends off of railroad tank cars, roll them in a creek, and that was your crossing. And that is another reason why it's so low, because it's 96-inch railroad cars, and it overtops probably, I'd say, three or four times a year at least. This is the cross section of it. As you can see, it's about a 24-foot width now. What TechStop plans on doing on the bridge approach, and the bridge is two 12-foot lanes and then a shoulder on either side. That's going to improve the safety for the traveling public and allow, if we ever come to a point where we widen that road, put some, you know, sidewalks, bicycle paths, it'll allow that to be on the side of the roadway. This is the interesting one. The top section is, of course, the right-of-way width that we're acquiring. The bottom shows you that the roadway, the dash line is the existing elevation, and then that top line is the new one. They're raising that bridge about eight feet, which is, when you think about it, that's a lot. That's why they have to go back so far, is to get that elevation, so it matches. They're basically matching that elevation at the driveway from Dr. Nguyen all the way to Citizens. So it's, they're raising it up, and that's to make sure that they get the flow under the bridge, and they don't back any water up on Spring Creek, back up into Woodway, Tropical Acres, anywhere else, and allow that road to not flood again. City obligations to the projects. On all the off-system bridge improvements, whether it's City of Victoria, County, the TechStop requires the city to participate a lot of times in the construction costs, but either way, the city is to coordinate all utility relocations as needed. That's whether it's AEP, AT&amp;T, Southern Link, of course, our city and water, water and sanitary sewer, fiber optic cables, Center Point Gas, any of the utilities, that's one of our things, is to coordinate it. We're not paying for all of them, but we need to coordinate, make sure they get relocated. Our cost, the city's obligation, is the right-of-way acquisitions, which, that's what's before you today. We have four properties estimated at $48,000 to acquire the properties and do some French relocations on some of them, plus recording fees. To relocate our water and sewer, it is approximately $250,000. That's going to be in-house design. And then our portion of the fiber relocation is about $30,000. That's a Victoria-area network. It serves the city, the hospital, school district, and we're all part of that group, and that's our portion to relocate that fiber. And of course, AEP, AT&amp;T, Southern Link, and Center Point Gas have all got to relocate theirs at their cost. So it's a big cost, but when you look at the overall, it's a four-and-a-half-million-dollar bridge that we're getting reasonably pretty cheap compared to what, if it was our bridge, technically it is, and it was our cost. Timeline. I'm going to start from in August of '21, that was the original TechStop minute order authorizing the project. Then in November of '22, we entered into the agreement to accept the match at 10%, or 10% for the construction costs. Then in August 16th, minute order authorizing the funding. We had to do our part first to say, "Yes, we're willing to do the match," so the AFA could be signed by TechStop. Following that, TechStop came home, said, "Hey, we don't need to do the match." That was on February 6th, 2024, to council. Then another resolution, just some wording variations, on April 16th of 2024, to get the wording exactly to meet TechStop's rules, the AFA, and the federal rules. July 2024, we would like to secure the right-of-way for the project. August of '24, we have the Mallett Project, which is our Mill and Overlay CIP, which is between Briggs and Ball Airport. What we'd like to do is get that constructed, done before this project even starts. So that's why you're seeing this in here as a city project, not related to the bridge, but it's in that general area. Then in September, we're going to begin the utility relocations, which would be, of course, the city's and AEP's and everybody else's. October of 2024, award the Mallett Project, which would be the Mill and Overlay for ARP City Project. Then in December of 2024, complete the utility relocations, that's everybody. TechStop would let the project bid in March of 2025, and then we would complete the Mill and Overlay in May. Then in June of 2025, they'll start the bridge construction, and they're expecting a 10-month project, which would be April of '26. They are going to close that road to through traffic. We've talked to those property owners along there. They're going to allow that. Of course, they're going to have access, but we need to close that road to through traffic for the safety. There's, and expedite that bridge construction. Items to consider: potential additions if funding becomes available, intersections, improvements to Mallett Drive, some at Ball Airport, as you're going southbound, maybe add a lane to get around and to get that school traffic through for about $200,000. And then at Briggs Boulevard, add a southbound right-turn lane. Of course, that's $125,000. Each of these are additions to that Mallett CIP project, if, again, funding available. At Loop 463, add a southbound right-turn lane. There already is an acceleration lane on Loop 463, so there wouldn't be any adjustment to the loop, which would save considerable amount. Mill and Overlay, remaining portions of Briggs Boulevard, and that would be between the bridge at, going towards the loop, and then the bridge going towards Mallett. One of them is, of course, longer, the Loop 463 is much longer than the Mallett to the driveway. That, and then Mallett-Mill and Overlay from Briggs to Loop 463. Basically, what we're showing on these items is this would complete that area for improvements. You'd get Briggs done, you'd get Mallett done in its entirety, and these are just items to consider, and that's a cost of 1.7 million. And that's all I had. If you've got any questions, we're looking forward to moving forward with the right-of-way acquisitions, and just wanted to give you a project, kind of an overview.
I've got a couple of questions. 10 months, does that seem a rather aggressive schedule? It seems like it would take longer than that to do what they're talking about doing.
It is. And I asked them about it, and they said, "When these contractors come in to do bridges, get out of the way."
Okay.
And they're, they're pretty confident about that. And I'll say this, if you look at the improvements that Hunter Paving is doing on the loop, and you look at those bridges going up, it's amazing how fast they get those things up. But they're, they're pretty confident on that 10-month.
Okay.
And it helps that traffic will be completely shut out?
Yes.
That makes sense. That makes sense. One other question about drainage, Spring Creek. I know we're not, this bridge won't change the amount of water. It's going to be the same, but it could, will it change how quickly that water passes through there? And I'm concerned about downstream, if you will, on Spring Creek, because I know we've had some backup issues along there.
They did the study, they did the, basically, drainage hydraulic study, and what their, their biggest concern is they didn't want to backwater up and cause flooding upstream. Downstream, there's still a little control structure at the loop, so it's passing whether it goes over the bridge or under the bridge. So they just didn't want to back it up or have it overtop the bridge. That was a big concern.
Okay, okay. We just, I, just double-check that, and let's make sure that we're not creating an unintended consequence downstream there.
Yes.
Okay, good. Yes?
So Briggs currently is an open drainage on both sides, correct?
Yes, sir.
So is there any work before the bridge or after the bridge on the drainage? Is that going to change anything?
They'll be doing some of the work on the side. That's why the extra right-of-ways needed, is to get that drainage off of that road and shore up that roadway, because I know there's some erosion spots, especially around Citizens, and they'll shore that up as part of the design and construction.
But it's not going to be closed?
No.
Okay.
It's not going to be closed. Still going to be open sections.
All right.
I have a question. In piggybacking on your 10-month, we're looking at that during hurricane season, which we already know. already know is...
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Sorry. And, piggybacking on, on what Mayor Crocker has asked regarding the 10 months, a lot of that looks to be occurring during what would be a very active hurricane season, when you're looking at September, August, right in there. Would that impact that 10-month? Has that taken, been taken into consideration because of heavy rains?
Yes. TechStop typically does, does their contracts on a working-day contract. We do ours on a calendar day, so they're looking at 10 months' working days. So if rain does affect it, yes, it could extend the time.
Okay. And then, the second question that I had, could you go over those, those costs? Like, the 48K, is that per property that we're looking at, or is that a whole?
Total, all four properties.
All four properties, okay.
Yes. And we have began negotiations and talked to each of the property owners.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information, as always.
Okay.
So then, I will entertain any motions with respect to item E1.
I move we adopt.
Second.
We've got a motion as second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, E1 passes. That moves us into item F, which is city manager reports. Mr. Garza?
Good evening, again. We do have two reports for you this evening. The first is an update on our child safety program, and Tiffany will take the lead on this item.
Good evening, Ms. Toda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have the pleasure of going over the child safety program, which covers two components, the Child Safety Grant and Child Passenger Safety Program. So just some background information to go over the timeline of how this program developed specifically for some of our newer council members. Back in August of 2019, council supported a resolution authorizing the county to adopt a fee on vehicle registration. That fee is, was at the time, a dollar that is added to vehicle registration, and the city gets a portion of that funding that supports this program. In January of 2020 is when the city began receiving that funding, and the county began assessing that fee on vehicle registrations. And then, they did opt to increase it, and in January of 2021 is when that moved up to $1.50. And in-state law, that fund has a very specific purpose. It can only be used for certain types of uses. One of those is a school crossing guard program, if the municipality operated that, and our city did not. And so, that is why we explored various options and proposed various programs to city council, and a program was adopted that incorporated a Child Safety Grant and Child Passenger Safety Program that we began implementing in October of 2021. That program includes two components. The majority of the funding that is received from the county, and I always like to clarify, it's not something we collect or that we budget for, it's something that we get from the county. It's based on the number of vehicles that are registered within the city limits. The county keeps a portion for administration, and they also keep the portion of vehicles in the county limits. And so, tonight's program is to go over the funding for kind of the fiscal year '25 program, which will be adopted during the preliminary, or the budget proposal in August with the special funds. It is considered one of our special fund that is oversaw by our programs. And so, this is oversaw by an internal committee, and we have representatives from various departments. And so, Katie and Victoria, who are in the Finance Department over grants, help us with specifically, the majority of what they do is the grant program itself. I also kind of administratively oversee both components, with the child passenger program and the grants. Adam helps with the legal aspects, the contracts regarding the grants. And then, Sergeant Brandon Allen serves both in the capacity as a child passenger safety technician. He also helps with getting any of those safety events. We have traffic control things of that sort, and then also serves on our grant committee as well. And so, the grant and award requirements, grants will open in July, and I have a timeline. At the end of this month, they'll open. We try not to have them conflict during hot fund awards, so there's no confusion there. And so, there's kind of four components that are part of the grant application. We have organization eligibility, which these were things that were discussed with city council to determine kind of what that would look like. They do have to be nonprofit organizations, non-taxing entities, that operate within the city of Victoria limits, or the city limits, but not necessarily exclusively. So we have organizations that may serve a greater area, and when we look at their application, we're looking specifically at those that they serve within the city limits. But they can't be, and their operation can't be outside the city limits, as far as their physical facility, if you will. And they have to be part of the eligible use category, which these are determined by state law. The two priorities are focused on child safety or abuse intervention and prevention services, and drug and alcohol or substance abuse prevention services for children. And children for that purpose is defined as those under the age of 18 years of age. As part of the application process, they do have to fill out two forms that are provided by the city, and we have a financial form, that is a budget form, as well as a child safety application. These forms will be made available on the website that you see posted there at the bottom of the screen there, victoria tx.gov/child safety program is where the applications will be made available when the applications open. The organizations also do need to supply their IRS 990 form. This has become a beneficial tool for us to be able to evaluate the organization and be able to get important data for evaluating that, and then their IRS tax exemption designation letter. And then, as a committee, we look at objective data. We look at, did they attend one of our workshops? We offer three applicant workshops in a hybrid format, virtual, and, you know, they can either attend via Zoom or come in person. We host them here in the chambers here at Municipal Court, Council Chamber area. Did they comply with all the document requirements? Is it, is the documentation credible and transparent? We look at the number of services they're providing and the number of children served. Sometimes, that is a one-to-one ratio, and sometimes, they will provide multiple services to one child. We have a variety of different organizations that have applied for funding. Some of our applicants have been Hope of South Texas, so they may provide multiple counseling sessions to one child. MidCoast Family Services has been one that has provided some of the drug and alcohol abuse services. And then, we have some, like Boys and Girls Club, that have provided more of a one-to-one service. And so, those are some of the applicants we have had in our prior applicant and current awards. And then, we also look at, now that this has been established for a few years, we look at, did they use their current, you know, or prior fund? So we want to make sure that they're not only taking, you know, that they're applying, but are they using the funding that they're allocated? And it is based on reimbursement, so they're not given the money upfront. They are reimbursed quarterly. They're able to submit for reimbursement quarterly in the fiscal year for the city. And so, those become effective along with the fiscal year and adopted through the fiscal year budget process. And so, the application timeline that we're looking at for this fiscal year, we're looking at, and generally, we have a three-week timeline for this application. So this will open July 29th, is when applications will be made available. Applicant workshops will be held on Wednesdays between July 29th and August 16th. Deadline to apply will be 5:00 PM on August 16th. There is a two-week review period from August 19th through August 30th. This will allow the committee, this is something new we're implementing this year. We did have almost double the amount of applicants this past year. We went from four to seven, and so, we wanted to be able to build in an additional week in case we needed to get additional information from the applicants. So we're allowing one additional week for reviewing of the applications to request any additional documentation that might be needed to make funding recommendations to city council. And so, that will be that August 19th to 30th timeframe is when our committee will meet, review those applications, and request any additional information that we might need. And then, we'll come back to city council with a resolution request with the funding amounts. And then, those contracts, if approved by city council, will then be effective come October 1. And so, this is where we're at currently. This is through essentially two quarters. We're into the third quarter now. We just, that is based on, again, on city fiscal year, and so, they do have until, this month, they have until about the 22nd to submit any documentation they would like to request reimbursement for, for this past quarter. And so, currently, we have had three of our seven applicants that have submitted either full or partial reimbursement. One has fully been reimbursed and two partial. Of the ones that have been reimbursed, $10,476 have been allocated to those, of $50,710 of a total award amount. So the total budget for last year's, or this current fiscal year's award was just over $50,000. Of those that are reporting, this is just the three that have submitted either full or partial requests. There have been 3,667 units of services provided to 524 children, 30 volunteers performing 331 hours of community service, or volunteer hours for the organizations. And they do have until the end of the fiscal year to submit for full reimbursement. So they still have essentially two quarters to still get documentation to us. And we've had success. Each year, our applicants have come to full 100% reimbursement, and so, I enjoy being able to work with our grant partners and get that process. Another big component of what this does is the Child Passenger Safety Program. So these are just some images from this year of some of the things that we've done out in the community. One of the newest collaborations has been with Target, hosting the car seat event in their parking lot during their, they have a buy-back car seat program where people can bring back car seats and exchange them, if you will. And so, that was nice. We didn't have to take back damaged car seats and throw them or toss them. We got to donate them into Target's box. So that was a nice way to have an event and partner with them, and we got several technicians recertified through that. And so, currently, to date, we have done 54 total inspections, either through events or through partnerships. 19 of those 54 were through a partnership with AgriLife. AgriLife came down, Texas A&amp;M, AgriLife came down. They had a rep from College Station who came, and we went to Hopkins Campus, and we actually did a booster seat initiative. And so, we, they issued out, they provided those booster seats, and we issued 19 booster seats to families at Hopkins Elementary. And we had a seat inside, they had a seat that they brought with them, and we helped them, showed them how to use it, and, you know, showed them how to properly get their child in there. And so, that was a really great initiative that was part of that partnership. And so, of the 25 seats you see issued there, six of those were from our car seat program, and 19 were from the booster seat that were provided by AgriLife. Four seats were donated, if you will, for destruction, so we do take the seats that are, that can't be reused, if you will, they can't be passed down to younger children within their families. We'll, you know, get them properly destroyed or tossed. We don't want unsafe car seats out on the roadway. And so far to date, we've had a total of six events, either car seat events or booths, and we have more planned. We are doing a couple of back-to-school events coming up. We have a technician training here in Victoria. We're hosting another one at the Community Center in September that is also going to have a car seat event at Target. We liked the greater visibility at Target, being able to draw in a lot of traffic. It was a very busy day back in April, so it was successful. And so, this is this year's proposed program. There is, the committee met around budget time. We were looking at kind of where we were with our fund balance each year, our fund balance. Because we began the program with a fund balance, we wanted to look at implementing or adding additional funding to the grant program. That initially was a priority for council, was really to support those local nonprofit organizations. And so, we are proposing, if council wishes here, to increase that to $70,000 for the grant program, and then leaving the car seat program flat to where it's at. And so, that does leave, the balance projected for the end of next fiscal year would be $190,693. And so, that, we have an existing fund balance, and this is what we're looking at proposing for this next year. And that's all I have for my presentation. The main focus was increasing that balance, the grant allocation, if you will, for the nonprofit organizations, to be able to use some of that fund balance that we have available. Our intent is to be able to fully fund that grant program upfront and have that available, not relying on that revenue that's coming in from that fee. We have it available. We're using that funding that we've had already built up. And then, we had an enhanced focus on the Child Passenger Safety Program this year. We continue to hope to have that as we move forward, and that this expectation is that these programs are to continue with that dedicated funding source. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I've got one.
Sure.
I noticed there was a fairly large fund balance from year to year. Why, why is that?
Yes, so when we, you're, you're talking about the, is it the $190,000?
Yes.
That's the total amount. So the, what we've, in this current year, or this past year, I should say, '23, in fiscal year '23, we had about $85,000 in collected revenues that we received from the, the fees. So each year, when we initially began this program, the intent was 60% of the collected amount was to be allocated to the grant program, 20% to the car seat program, and 20% to the fund balance. Each year, we kind of followed that same thing. We were adding more and more to the fund balance versus adjusting and reallocating and increasing our grant budget. And so, the intent now with this year is, we'll be able to, not necessarily grow it each year, but we'll be able to remain steady and be able to have this as long as the funding is available. And so, but when we were initially doing it, we weren't readjusting it based on, we were just basing it off of that prior direction when we initially established it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Toda. I know this is a really important and, you know, vital program for the citizens and for our kids, and so, thank you for all the work y'all put into it. All right, item F2. Mr. Garza, I believe this is all you.
It is, yes. You're going to have me for about an hour, maybe with some Q&amp;A. But as I alluded to on Friday, when we shared the preliminary budget, felt it was important to take some time outside of Friday to delve into the details of the proposed pay program, because I think it's warranted. You know, it's a very, very important topic. You know, as you heard earlier, obviously, this impacts our employees, all of whom are very critical across our entire organization. And so, I just think it warrants that extra time. Part of what I'll present to you today, and I want to kind of jump the gun a little bit, just for, for your benefit as you hear the presentation, is that what you'll hear is some background information on what, on what the problem is, meaning our vacancy issue or retention issue. You, I'll provide an overview of the 2020 compensation study that we went through, what we've been able to implement over the last four fiscal years, the results of the updated compensation study that we did in 2024, of course, the recommendation that was included in the preliminary budget, which does include a reduction in the updated service credit for TMRS, as well as an alternative option at the direction of the mayor. In some of you, we've developed an option that wouldn't reduce the updated service credit, but doesn't provide as much of a pay bump in fiscal, throughout the fiscal years '25 and '26, because there's only so much money that we have to work with, right? So ultimately, what I will be needing from you is direction on which pay program option, in essence, you'd prefer to see in the proposed budget that I'll make and present to you on August 6th. And the best way to do this, in my opinion, and obviously, I'm open to suggestions on, on a different approach, would be to focus today on providing you the information, obviously allowing you some time to digest it, because it will be a lot of numbers and percentages that I'll throw your way. And then, at our next council meeting on the 16th, it'll be an opportunity for you to ask some additional questions and then provide that direction, so that, again, as we finalize the proposed budget by the end of July, it's included in the proposed budget in August. That's how I envision this kind of going. And so, to that end, I want to talk a little bit about the problem statement, which, what can the city, which is, what can the city do to reduce turnover and fill vacancies within our organization? And I thought the best way to paint this picture was to show you just a couple of data points, and I know that the numbers are a little bit hard to see, but in essence, what you're seeing here is the, a sort of historical look of the number of vacancies at the end of each particular fiscal year, going back to 2015. The red is for fire, the blue is for police, and the green is for public works. And there's some key takeaways from this. One, right off the bat, public works is our biggest issue. Public works is the department that has experienced the most. Public works is the department that has experienced the most vacancies in that timeframe leading up to today. The other is that you do see an increase in fire in fiscal years 21 and 22. And you may recall us mentioning while we were in the middle of those fiscal years, partly contributing that to some of the, to the pandemic. That was sort of a trend going, a trend that was a nationwide trend because there was just a lot of burnout, quite frankly, that a lot of folks in the fire department and EMS and paramedic world were feeling due to the pandemic. So, we were not immune to that. And so, that explains that. But ultimately, there is an increase in police and fire vacancies over the last four years. And then, again, significantly, public works is the biggest challenge for us. Now, this is just in terms of vacancies. Now, if we look at how many people have left the organization, this is intended to reflect that. And, and you would think that there'd be somewhat of a correlation between the two graphs, but it speaks to the number of vacancies that we still have today and that we haven't been able to fill all of them. But it's a very similar story in terms of public works is where we're seeing the most turnover in recent years. And then, the uptick in the fire department in fiscal years 21, 22, and overall, that uptick with public safety between fiscal years 21 and 23. But obviously, it's been a challenge for us historically, right, to some extent, right? And part of what I'm trying to showcase with these graphs is that while, yes, it's always been a challenge for us to keep our staffing level or our staffing levels filled, it has gotten a little bit worse just in the last three or four years, predominantly in public works. That's the big sort of takeaway from, from this. And so, in recent meetings that I had with, with employees, we talked about how ultimately the three factors that impact somebody's decision to leave, to stay or whatnot are obviously these three buckets, right? Wages, health insurance, retirement. Shortly after I arrived in 2019, we went through an exercise where we conducted surveys amongst the leadership team and others. And it became very evident that at the time, wages was a concern, but quite frankly, the health insurance was a bigger concern based off the feedback that we received in 2019. And so, we've invested quite a bit in, in sort of shoring that up. And I'll show you some of that history here in a bit. But there really hasn't been much conversation about retirement in that timeframe, I guess, of course, until now, right? And part of what I'd like for you to keep in mind is this reality, and I've been very upfront with our employees and I'll be very upfront with you, that it's very, very challenging for Victoria specifically because of our lack of growth. And I'll show you a slide here in a second that shows that, to have top tier in all three categories. And it unfortunately puts us in a position to have to prioritize these buckets and prioritize which buckets do we want to invest more money in? And ultimately, which buckets do we think will make a greater impact in solving our problem, which is to reduce turnover and fill the vacancies that we have in our organization? And so, knowing full well that wages was a big concern, we embarked on a 2020 compensation study. Now, keep in mind, this is pre-pandemic. So, even though it's labeled 2020, a lot of the data was really derived from 2019, oops, from 2019, even though it was completed in the early part of 2020. So, this is pre-pandemic. And I list out some of the cities and other organizations that we used to compare ourselves to. We were trying to be mindful about budget size. We were trying to be mindful of population size with some of this. But we did receive feedback shortly after completing the 2020 study that perhaps we should have used cities where we're losing people to. And we made that adjustment in 2024, and I'll speak to that. But in 2020, if we were to pull up all the different positions that were compared and we were to just say, okay, if this position is within 5% of market, we're gonna, we're gonna say we're competitive, how many of our positions were non-competitive? And for civilian positions, and to be clear, when I say civilian positions, I'm not referring to our certified firefighters or licensed police officers. So, civilian employees is practically every non-uniform person in the organization. The data in 2020 suggested that 61% of the positions that were surveyed were below market or behind market and that only 39% of those positions of civilian positions were competitive. Now, if we were to sort of extrapolate and just look at just police and fire, right, which the figures I just shared didn't include them, that data suggested that we were 3% behind market for entry for police officer and 24% behind end of that range. This wasn't a surprise at the time. And as you heard earlier, we lose a lot of experienced police officers, and this is exactly why. Because even though we were maybe in the ballpark of starting pay, as a police officer progresses in their career, they become a senior police officer, they're in that five to 10-year sort of window of experience for us, we weren't adequately compensating for that experience and that tenure. And so, it became very easy for an experienced Victoria police officer to leave and work elsewhere where they would be properly compensated for their level of experience. So, it wasn't a surprise to us that the data backed up that we were still behind market, but in the ballpark, but mostly behind with the tenured folks on the police side. The data in 2020 for, on the, on the fire department side showed 7% behind market and 7% behind end of range. But as I alluded to earlier, historically, we haven't had as much of an issue with vacancies and retention in the fire department that he, that we've had with the police department. Much of the vacancies with the fire department and the retention issues we had with the fire department have really been something that has been a meaningful hit for us, beginning in the middle of the pandemic onward. And I'll speak to that a little bit, a little bit later. But that was 2020. So, we embarked on implementing recommendations from that plan over a few years. We knew that it would be impossible then, just how it is now, to implement any recommendation from one year to the next. And so, this is a snapshot that shows what we've been able to do from fiscal years 21 to 24. And I'll highlight a couple of things here. In fiscal year 21, because even though all along, throughout our effort to do the compensation study in 2019 and 2020, we also embarked on making some significant changes to our approach to our health insurance. We went through an RFQ process, selected a new health benefit consultant, for example. That made a huge difference to us, difference for us. Ultimately, we changed the level of, of financial contribution that we were putting towards the premiums into our health fund, beginning in 2021. Many of you may recall 10 years ago or so, when the city embarked on a path to go to solely high deductible plans. And in essence, passed on the expense of a lot of that to our employees by increasing employee premiums, increasing out-of-pockets, increasing deductibles. Well, one of the things that didn't really quite happen to the extent that it probably should have at the time was the amount of money the city was putting towards those plans. And so, we rectified that in 2021. And like I said, we implemented and started implementing this pay program, and I won't go through the details of the cost. But ultimately, over this four-year period, we, in essence, increased our recurring expenditures by over $5 million. And so, let's think about that for a second. So, if I remove that $1 million in health insurance fund from that five, in essence, it's $4 million in just pay program. That's pay, straight up, and the fringe benefits that come with it. So, on average, it's safe to say that between fiscal years 21 and 24, we pumped on average of $1 million into wages and fringe benefits for our employees. The fringe side of it really became obvious in fiscal year 24 when our TMRS rate went up significantly. And I say significantly because even though 1.15% may not seem like a lot, in real dollars, that was an increase of $410,000 for us in fiscal year 24 that had to go to TMRS. And I'll show that history here in a little bit. But in a nutshell, that's what happened between this four, these four fiscal years. And when, quite frankly, if you would have asked me back in 2020, you know, what impact do you think the implementation of this, of this plan is gonna have on our retention and our, and vacancy and everything? I would have told you, I'm super excited about it. I think it's gonna make a difference. It's gonna make a difference. But nobody could have foreseen the pandemic. Nobody could have foreseen all the other factors that have taken place that haven't necessarily felt, hasn't necessarily facilitated this investment into folks feeling like it's made a difference, just because of external factors, right? And that's just the reality of it. And as I alluded to on the health benefit side, we started adding that extra million dollars beginning in fiscal year 21. But we've also been able to decrease employee premiums pretty significantly in the last three, four years. We've been able to add value, is how we've awarded it over the last few years, by just simply adding just more supplemental options for, for our employees and just improved value to our offerings. And as I alluded to on Friday, for fiscal year 25, we are exploring very seriously, for the first time, adding an EPO plan to the mix in, for fiscal year 25, that would lower deductibles, would lower out-of-pockets, but quite frankly, would increase the premium for everybody involved, would increase the premium for us as the employer, would increase the premium for the employee. Because the way it works when you're self-insured is that the cost of the premium and the revenue that the premium generates ought to be sufficient cash to be able to pay for the medical claims, right? And we all know that medical costs aren't going down. And so, if we begin to offer a plan that does have a lower deductible for employees and a lower out-of-pocket, we're picking up, the premium is picking up, the expense above that, right? Does that make sense? However, employees have been asking for this option for several years, and I feel comfortable and confident in pursuing this option predominantly because of where our health plan fund is today. It's kind of mind-boggling, as I alluded to on Friday, to think that just five years ago, the reserve funds in our health fund was at $1.5 million. We, in no way, shape, or form, could have been having a conversation about introducing an EPO plan in 2019. There was just not enough cushion there in our health fund to take any level of risk with making some pretty significant sort of changes or additions to our health plan offerings. But thankfully, because of that extra million dollars that we pump every year into our health fund, we've been able to get to a point where we are roughly at a year's worth of a reserve in our health plan. And the last time we were there was literally 10 years ago. And so, the story behind our health fund is an extremely successful story that, in my opinion, is only gonna continue to pay dividends in enhancements and improvements to our health offerings, health benefit offerings, right? And if we go back to the chart where I showed the three buckets, wages, health benefits, and retirement, you know, we've done our part and we will continue to do our part on the health benefit part of that. And this is an example of the why we've been able to do that. But ultimately, we need to also be mindful of the reality of why we were even able to do any of that to begin with. Because it wasn't because I showed up in 2019. It wasn't because Raleigh McCoy became mayor. It was because the city, quite frankly, has experienced pretty good revenue growth over the last four or five years that has made it easier for myself and for you to adopt budgets that had what I just described, right? On the property tax side, you know, we've been able to see on average over the last four years, an increase of roughly $700,000 a year in new revenue. Before then, it was only $200,000, right? So, there's a direct correlation between additional revenue and what we're able to do, without a doubt. And that occurred on the sales tax side as well, where over the last few years, we're anticipating, you know, roughly a million dollars on average of an increase. And before then, it was only 436, right? And so, I think it's important as a big takeaway to understand that the reason why we were able to increase our recurring expenditures by over $5 million, which in fiscal years 21 and 24, is because we had the additional revenue to do it. And we weren't put in a position where we had to make significant sacrifices or reductions or changes to anything else in order to do it. This here shows a little bit of that story. And what I like about this graphic is that you can very clearly show, you can very clearly see when we actually started to experience this growth in property values and sales tax revenue trending in the same direction, right, which has started in 2020. Because ultimately, these two lines ought to be trending in the same direction. Because both of these two things are critical things to look at when you're asking yourself basic things like, is our community growing? Is economic development working? Is it not? And you could see that historically, there really wasn't a rhyme or reason, even though there are some explanatory hits there. You know, Harvey's obviously a big reason why 2017, you know, went down. You know, you see the significant increases caused by the Eagle Ford movement and the impact that had in our community roughly 10 years ago. So, some of that can be explained. But those things are one-offs, right? And so, what we've experienced over the last few years was consistent and reliable, but only for that duration, right? Well, as I mentioned to you and I mentioned to employees, that momentum is gonna stop. And it's stopping because there's this economic stabilization taking place that is creating that plateauing of revenues, right? It goes without saying that inflation is changing the name of the game as it relates to what people have disposable income for. It goes without saying that when you have a sales tax revenue that's based off of the price of a product and that product is now facing inflation, it's a false sense of an increase in sales tax revenue because once inflation stabilizes, your sales tax revenue is gonna stabilize, right? So, this historical inflation that we've experienced is not sustainable and it's created, it's contributed to this blip in what we've seen the last few years. Interest rates is obviously contributing to lack of growth everywhere because it's just much harder for people to move, et cetera. Housing market's part of that. I've hit briefly in the past about the impact of stimulus funds because one of the things that also happened when the pandemic hit was that the federal government put out a lot of money. They put out a lot of money personally to people's pocketbooks, but they also put out a lot of money to organizations like us or others where we've been able to put that money out in some capacity to be utilized. But that was one-time cash, right? All of that stimulus, the stimulus dollars that came because of the pandemic weren't a sustainable revenue generating thing that was gonna be out there, right? So, that's creating the stabilization. I added to this slide, this icon here for lack of growth because I think it's important, again, and I'm gonna reemphasize it every chance I get, that the growth or lack thereof of Victoria has contributed and contributes directly to how much money we have available to even just have a conversation about. Now, this isn't something that we're experiencing just here. This is a snapshot of some headlines that have come through in the TML news emails that we get every day of some of the things that are going on in other cities. And I want to kind of go back just to make it pop out again. But cities all across the state are having to cut expenditures. City of Stafford, for example, is looking at adopting a property tax rate for the first time in three decades because they're facing some significant shortfalls by the fact that their economic stabilization they're experiencing in their sales tax revenue side is not gonna keep up with their expenditures. We're seeing cities of Corpus Christi, even cities that are large cities that you would think would be proof or would be proofed from this economic stabilization are also feeling it. And so, I think this is important because this isn't just something that's going on in Victoria, it's going on everywhere. And cities everywhere are having to have conversations about what to cut. The difference is that a lot of these cities are experiencing growth to a greater degree than we are. And so, to some extent, they're able to absorb these negative impacts better than we can because they have new growth to cancel out some of the economic stabilization that they're experiencing, and we don't have that. So, in spite of all of this, right, in spite of us investing the $5 million in recurring expenditures over four years, right, in spite of the impact the pandemic had on everything, in spite of this economic stabilization that we're experiencing, we still have a problem. Because as I shared, we're still seeing vacancies, right? We have the most vacancies in public works we've ever had. That's the department that experienced, that is experiencing it the most, right? And of course, police and fire, it's always been an issue, but I would argue that it's a little bit worse just in the last few years, right? So, again, when we look at the three buckets, right, what do we think we ought to invest in, in order to help this problem? I'm contending that the priority order for these items are in essence what, how they're listed on this slide, with wages coming first, health benefits coming second, and retirement coming third. Because if push comes to shove and we have to recalibrate and adjust our limited funds, this would be the priority order that I think could solve the problem. And I, like I mentioned, we have focused- And I, like I mentioned, we have focused some on wages, we continue to focus on health benefits, and it's putting us in a position to unfortunately consider recalibrating the retirement. But again, there's an option not to. In twenty twenty four, we decided to update the compensation study because we knew that the pandemic just had the market, um, created greater separation between us and other places. We didn't have to go through a study to tell us that, but we certainly needed to go through a study to try and identify how much, right? Because we knew just by what they were telling us, by what our own folks were telling us, we knew that other communities had significantly increased compensation for critical positions. We knew that, right? But we went to through the study to try and understand to what extent. We knew that inflation was creating a challenge for a lot of our employees, especially our lower paid employees. And so we made it a point to go through this study with the specific, with the specific direction to increase minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. We had just increased it to thirteen in fiscal year twenty two. But I'm sure we could all agree that even fifteen dollars an hour is really not, um, ideal. But nonetheless, that was the goal. We knew going into the study that it would be cost prohibitive to afford getting to whatever the data would show at a hundred percent of market, because we know that we're just in a completely different place than everybody else that is being looked at in comparison. This slide shows you the growth that all these cities that we compared ourselves to experienced in the last twenty years, from the two thousand cents to the twenty twenty cents. And you can see that Victoria only experienced eight percent growth in that twenty year period, and everything else speaks for itself. Now, there's a lot of metrics that could be utilized to try and compare our financial resources to another. But this is the easiest, I think, because obviously, when your community is experiencing growth, you had, your tax base is growing. And when your tax base is growing, you have more cash to be able to either A, keep up with what you're doing, or B, be able to enhance it. And so when these cities have access to a greater revenue source, because their tax base has experienced that growth, they're able to, in the middle of a pandemic, recalibrate and very easily increase pay for their critical positions, because they have the tax base and they have the budget to be able to do that, right? Cities on the lower end of the spectrum don't have the same luxury, right? And that's the big takeaway, right? And so if something comes out of this entire exercise, is that I'd like to come out of this exercise, is a greater awareness and understanding that our financial position here is directly tied to our growth or lack thereof. Because one of the things that I do take very personal, and that really does bother me, is when folks insinuate that we don't pay our people better because we just don't want to, or we don't care. And the reality is that we do want to and we do care, but we don't have the luxury of having access to as much money as other communities do. And that is just our reality. So nonetheless, we went through the exercise, right? And it confirmed this greater market separation for public safety positions compared to twenty twenty, which again, wasn't a surprise. And I'll share a table here that shows that a little better. It included one hundred and fifty nine positions. This table here is a breakdown of all of those one hundred and fifty nine positions. So this is inclusive of public safety positions. And so you can see how out of those one hundred and fifty nine, we have ten positions that were more than twenty five percent behind market, nineteen that were between twenty and twenty five percent behind market, and so on and so forth. If we remove the public safety positions, so that I can compare apples to apples, the civilian positions, the twenty twenty four study showed that eighty six percent of our civilian positions are behind market. In twenty twenty, that was sixty one percent. So the twenty twenty four study not only confirms this greater separation for our public safety positions, but it confirms that even in our civilian positions, we're also falling further behind comparatively speaking to the market.
And and this study was based strictly on wages, or did this include benefits as well?
This is just looking at wages. Great question. This is, this is strictly only looking at, at wages, it's strictly looking at the pay ranges for each of these organizations.
Got it.
Now, as I alluded to at the beginning, we knew that it would be cost prohibitive to get up to a hundred percent of market. And so the recommendation that's coming out of the twenty twenty four compensation study is to try and get to ninety percent of market. And that would cost us three point two million dollars over a two year period is the proposal. Now, I mentioned how in twenty twenty, it showed police being three percent behind market, right? At the beginning, at the comparative starting pay, and then at the end of the range being at twenty five, and fire being at seven and seven. The twenty twenty four compensation study shows that starting pay for police officer, we are now nineteen percent behind market. And for fire, we are in essence seventeen percent behind market. So I wanna be very clear and transparent that the data does back up, that there's been this greater market separation for our public safety positions. And I very intentionally included as well in this, all of the ranks that are included in our step plan for police and fire, because it's not just about how much we pay when somebody starts their job. We should be mindful of what we're paying for the ranks above as well, to ensure that we're keeping up with market as best we can in all of these other positions within police and fire. And so, for example, if I were to pull out the fire lieutenant position, the fire lieutenant position shows that it's actually thirty one percent behind market in minimum pay. So if we're gonna come back around, right, and make a recommendation on how this would look better, there would be a substantial increase to fire lieutenant pay greater than the beginning pay, because the data suggests that our fire lieutenant pay is further behind market. Does that make sense? So we need to be mindful of all of that. And so in a nutshell, what the recommendation is, as I alluded to, three point two million dollars over two years. What this looks like is, the proposal is that in fiscal year twenty five, the gross impact of that is one point eight million. That includes a five percent across the board increase to our police and fire folks that are included in the step plan. Those that are due a step in fiscal year twenty five would receive an additional one and a half percent. So some would receive six and a half percent increase in pay in fiscal year twenty five. Now, for your own awareness, and especially for our new council members, the step structure that we have is designed to be a three percent increase in pay every two years. But because we're changing the line, we're making that one and a half percent in fiscal year twenty five, and then coming back and and making it three percent again, once we implement the new, the new pay in fiscal year twenty six. But more on that later, but that's how the step kinda works. The proposal has a three percent across the board increase to civilian employees. It increases the minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. These figures still do not include any additional certification pay structure for public works. That is still something that is, that we're still trying to figure out. Because again, the data suggests that public works is our department that is the one that is experiencing the greatest issue, not police and fire. And under this proposal, if we don't come up with an additional way to pay our folks in public works more than just that three percent, we're gonna continue having an issue. Because coincidentally, our public works department also has some of our lower paid positions, and three percent is nothing. You know, three percent is nothing when you're making thirty thousand dollars a year, right? So we need to come up with a separate structure to at minimum help put a Band-Aid to a greater degree with public works. So that's still in the works, but I'm trying to be mindful of that. In fiscal year twenty six, the proposal would cost gross one point four six million. This would adopt official new step plan structure for police and fire, which would be at ninety percent of of market, and I'll show you what that looks like here in a second. And it would move all of the pay ranges for all, for all of our civilian positions to ninety percent of the data. Now, what does ninety percent of the data mean? So for example, if I have a position or we have a position that makes forty thousand dollars a year currently, and the data suggests that starting pay ought to be fifty thousand, what we're saying is that, and and if you multiply that, right, times six hundred people, we're saying we can't afford to increase pay for that, to that person to get up to fif, to fifty thousand, which is a hundred percent of market. What we're saying is that we will adopt a pay range at ninety percent of market, which is forty five thousand, not fifty, and saying that we can't afford to get that person from forty to forty five. Does that make sense? one of the things that is a reality of the situation is that that pay for not for civilians in fiscal year twenty six will vary quite a bit. Because as you saw earlier, there are some civilian positions that are twenty five percent behind market, and there are some that are at market. And so it does get tricky, because certainly it would roll off the tongue a lot easier to just say, everybody's gonna get a three percent in fiscal year twenty six. But on the civilian side, that's not how it's, that's not how it's gonna roll out. But for now, we haven't necessarily focused too much on the details of twenty six, because we have next summer to figure that out. Of course, right now, the priority's twenty five, but I think it helps to understand what we're committing to, at least as a baseline for fiscal year twenty six. Now, I also want to publicly acknowledge that even after the implementation of fiscal year twenty six, we will still have an issue to contend with on the civilian side once we get to that. Because all this would do in twenty six is get everybody to a new minimum. And unlike the step structure in police and fire, that does account for tenure, because it moves them along the, the ladder of the steps, we don't have that same structure for civilian employees. And so once we start talking about fiscal year twenty seven, twenty eight, we're gonna have to start pumping more money into the civilian side of the equation, so that we can properly move folks along the pay range to account for experience, so that we don't have an issue of somebody ten years of service in a position making just as much as the person that's starting tomorrow. That's a real issue, right? Because it doesn't show that we're rewarding or recognizing that tenure, that experience. Again, that's not an issue with police and fire, because they have the step structure and they move along it as they reach tenure. But we don't have that on the civilian side. So we're gonna have to makeshift a third phase of this in fiscal year twenty seven to kind of make that improvement. So I think that's important, because as we talk about cost impact moving forward, I think it's important that we all recognize that in reality, the implementation of these recommendations is more than a two year recommendation. Just how it took us four years to implement the recommendations from fiscal year, I'm sorry, from the twenty twenty compensation study, I suspect that in reality, it will take us three or four years to truly get to a, a, a better baseline for everybody. So be mindful of that. Now, what does that look for police and fire? What you, what you, what I, what I'm showing you here is current pay for starting pay for these, for these positions with police and fire, and what the proposal is, which is ninety percent of market. So for police, currently starting pay is just shy of fifty one thousand. The proposal has increasing that to fifty, fifty six thousand, four hundred and sixty six. A hundred percent of market here would be sixty two thousand. And so just stop and pause for a moment to think about how expensive it is for us to get to ninety percent of market, right? Three point two million. Now imagine how much more it would cost for us if we were actually trying to get to a hundred percent of market in all positions. It's cost prohibitive, not even worth going through the exercise to figure out how much that would cost. On the fire side, current pay, starting pay for firefighter is fifty thousand, four hundred and twelve. The recommendation is to be at fifty four thousand, three hundred and eighty one. That's ninety percent of market. A hundred percent of market in this position would be sixty grand. And you very clearly here show what that ninety percent starting pay is for all the others. And I'll go back to my example of fire lieutenant. So on firefighter side, for example, right? You're at fifty now, and we're proposing fifty four, just for easy math. Four thousand dollar increase, right? Well, on the lieutenant side, it's going from sixty three thousand to sixty eight, right? So it's greater. But again, the data, the data showed that we were further behind in starting pay for fire lieutenant than we were for firefighter, right? And so that's how, you know, you can interpret this and compare, you know, whatnot. And obviously, you know, you'll have a copy of this and whatnot for you to look at and review after the meeting. But this is what the proposal is. Ninety percent of pay, ninety, being reflective of ninety percent of the market data. Now, how are we gonna pay for this, right? Three point two million dollars over two years. You've already talked about how there's this economic stabilization going on, and we're not gonna continue to see these historic increases in property tax and sales tax revenue. So how are we gonna pay for this? As you learned on Friday, the preliminary budget and the proposed budget will include indefinitely freezing ten vacant positions. All of these are with public works. Roughly half utility fund, roughly half general fund. We are decreasing one time expenditures in fiscal year twenty twenty five, and as you heard on Friday, some of that is being reflective and not having the cash to buy additional police cars in fiscal year twenty five. So we're having to make some sacrifices, right, in one time expenditures to pay better wages. I'm gonna talk about the T M R S changes to the updated service credit, and very briefly on a new non retroactive cola, that new non retroactive cola is really no impact at all, other than just saves us a little bit of money, but that's not actually changing the, the, the benefit offering on colas. But I'll hit on that a little bit later. And then the increased sales tax revenue risk, which you learn more about on Friday, in that the only reason why we're able to take this increased sales tax revenue risk is because of our conservative approach to sales tax revenue over the last few years that is creating this capacity to in essence, increase the projection and increase sales tax revenue for a recurring expense purpose next year to the tune of seven hundred thousand dollars, right? You, you learned about that on Friday. So in a nutshell, that's how we envisioned paying for that. And so how does that look like sort of in real life, once you take all of that into account? So this shows fiscal year twenty five impact, and that's what I wanna focus on for now. I mentioned the one point eight million dollar gross cost of the pay program. You have the savings produced, right, by the changes in T M R S of nine hundred and thirty six thousand. That's the savings we anticipate we would have by making that change. The baseline adjustment accounts for the ten frozen positions, which would then lead to a net cost of fiscal year twenty five implementation of the recommendation of a little over four hundred thousand dollars. Now, what this is also showing for full transparency sake, is an additional T M R S savings in fiscal year twenty six, and what the net cost of the proposal, what it would be in fiscal year twenty six. Because T M R S works on a calendar year basis. So any change that is made for T M R S, whether for the good or for the net, like, doesn't matter, just any change that happens with T M R S doesn't go into effect until January, and our fiscal year starts October first. So that's why we're only realizing roughly seventy five percent of savings from the T M R S changes in fiscal year twenty five, and the other twenty five percent fully in twenty six. That's why you see that spread out that way. Now, as I mentioned on Friday, in spite of the fact that the proposed pay program is only a net cost of a little over four hundred thousand, our overall preliminary cost estimate for the increase in personnel expenses is actually close to a million dollars. And that's because of having to add money for fire overtime. Now, that's being driven by a few factors. We know that when we went during the pandemic, there had to, there Chief Fox, and we were put in a position to have to make some significant structural changes to the organization. That's had an unintended consequence on the overtime. But as I also showed you earlier, we're also experiencing greater vacancies with the fire department that we had never before. And so a combination of those two things is now putting us in a position to have to add an additional four hundred and thirty one thousand in the budget line item for fire overtime. Does that make sense? Some of these other smaller charges, the W C, that's workman's comp, work, where our workman's comp rate is going up a little bit, that fluctuates depending on the number of claims. And so we've just approached the, uh, coming towards the end of an era where we've had a lot of incidents, and so our workman's comp rate is going up. Temp pay is reflective of the fact that we're also proposing in- Temp pay is reflective of the fact that we're also proposing increase um our temp pay from ten dollars an hour to twelve dollars an hour. That's specifically reflected under other funds because the only area where we have temp employees is the golf course, which is not general fund. The reason why you see the utility fund trending to the left of this line and the number in red is because of the baseline adjustment of reducing six or unfunding, I should say. Unfunding and freezing six positions with the utility fund. That's why that's flowing in that direction. So I wanna pause there for a second because I know this is a very long presentation, but I think it's warranted. And so I'm trying to go at a good pace. But I wanna pause there for a second before I transition to talking about TMRS in greater degree to see if there are any questions about the proposed pay program as of now or any of the budgetary figures that I've shared. Yes, ma'am.
I just a little clarification on the, I think, the slide that you just had of well, this year, uh, the net would be four hundred and two thousand increase. And then next year, the net would be one million, one hundred, six, four, twenty five increase. But what's not on this slide for next year is that we would additionally have in the budget the four hundred and two, one oh two that we had put in this year. In in other words, I guess I'm getting at what's the recurring amount in twenty five that is also in that pay program? But once it gets put in, it's it's in there. And and that's sort of an, and I'm gonna make an editorial comment because I'm sitting here looking at the these costs and comparing them to the costs of redoing some streets in the subdivision, and I'm trying to see how many subdivisions I'm putting into our pay program instead. That was my editorial comment.
No, but I think it's a great question and, you know, and I should have hit on the total aspect of this of this table because you're right, it's, you know, these numbers add up. And so the total net cost of this implementation of three point two million is one point five million. And as I alluded to on Friday, and I'll hit on it more later, our lo- my our level of confidence of being able to implement the recommended fiscal year twenty six pay program is really high right now because of the preliminary budget that was proposed that is maximizing revenue on the property tax side. We've got that additional seven hundred thousand dollars in sales tax because of our conservative budgeting approach. So we are intentionally pre-planning to utilize some of those dollars in fiscal year twenty six. Because think about what we're doing here, right? We've never and no city ever really does in essence, come out and commit to something happening two years from now. Because there's just too many unknown variables that can happen from now until then. But the reason why we feel very confident in getting in front of employees and saying, hey, this is gonna cost three point two million dollars and we're gonna get you to ninety percent of market in fiscal year twenty six is because we're seeing the revenues in fiscal year twenty five, thanks to paying off debt early, right? Which is which is allowing us the ability to shift some dollars from the INS rate to the M and O rate and this additional seven hundred grand that we'll be able to get and utilize for recurring expense on the sales tax side, both of which we do not foresee happening or existing going into fiscal year twenty six, right? So that's why our level of confidence is high in that regard. But I'll elaborate more on that when I kinda get to a little bit more of the dollar figures, if that's okay.
Well, and I think your point's well taken that the fact that we have paid off debt early minimizes the impact and our ability to do this, not just next year, but potentially not just this coming year, but potentially the year after. Had had we not paid that off early, that four oh two, one point five is gonna be a much bigger number.
Oh, a hundred percent, you know, and and, you know, if we didn't, if I wasn't proposing freezing positions, you know, that number would be greater.
Sure.
You know, and so if we didn't decrease one-time expenditures, the number would be greater, right? You know, we're trying to do our part to recalibrate, right, to focus more cash on wages.
Well, and 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 I think it's important to point out that paying off that debt early has more than just an interest saving. It has a ripple effects on other part of the budget, and I think we're seeing that here.
Right, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you you say we're gonna get to market value.
Ninety percent of market.
Ninety percent of market, excuse me. In twenty twenty six.
Yes, sir.
But that value, ninety percent value is the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four study.
Right.
So wouldn't we might be a little further behind and wouldn't it be more like eighty five percent of market?
Yes, that's a great question, and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. You're absolutely correct that our recommendation is strictly looking at the data coming from the twenty twenty four study. Um, and you're absolutely correct that the market is gonna continue to shift away from us, right? Now, I think might have been Jan that might have asked me this question in our meeting, but I don't think that the market is going to get away from us to the extent that it has the last four years. Because again, every other community is also experiencing an uh their version of an economic stabilization. And so I don't foresee, you know, if we went from being, I'm just gonna use easy math purposes, you know, if we went on average, it's in Police and Fire being five percent behind market four years ago to fifteen percent behind market now, I don't foresee that four years from now, it would be that much of a swing. But nonetheless, there is without a doubt a continual shift that the cities will do their own cost of living adjustments, you know, they're gonna do their own comparisons, right? Because we might be here comparing ourselves to, you know, Saguin, New Braunfels, whatever. But they're over there comparing themselves to San Antonio, Bernie, you know, cities that have even more money than they do, right? And so everybody's always gonna be trying to do the best they can. And our unfortunate reality is that because we don't have the growth that other communities have, what we're able to do is not as much as what other communities can, right? So I wanna transition, did you wanna ask a question?
I do. And comment, I feel like we're shifting resources from one area to another without resolving the underlying financial imbalance primarily. And
Can you elaborate on this?
Specifically, you made a point that the three things that are most important to employees are wages, health benefits, and retirement. And we're talking about affecting retirement when also on what you presented, it's noted that in twenty nineteen, we began providing better health benefits, but we've still continued to see a higher increase in vacancies. And so if we if we make these changes to the retirement system, how does that affect our ability to retain and recruit? Not only for fire and police, but for civilian positions when you have Ken who's going to retire. And we're looking at some point, at some point, and
When are you retiring?
Looking to retire at some point, and we're going to have to fill that position. And we have a retirement program that is not comparable to other cities of our size.
And I have a slide later in the presentation that actually graphically kinda shows how we compare to these other cities on the TMRS front. And so if it's okay with you, I'll reserve my answer to your question till we get to that slide. Because it might make more sense once we get to that slide, once you see graphically kinda where we stand in comparison to these other cities on the TMRS front. But to your point, though, about, you know, in spite of making these changes to health insurance premiums and whatnot since twenty nineteen, we're still seeing, you know, the increases in vacancies. Quite frankly, that just proves that people aren't staying or they aren't um coming, you know, because of the health insurance part of it, right? Now, we know from our exit interviews that back in that timeframe, people were absolutely leaving. And I'm sure folks in the room could back up this statement that folks, we literally did lose folks strictly because of the health insurance plan that we had at the time. You know, when we made the shift to high deductible plans, we lost a lot of people just because of that change, right? Had nothing to do with wages. You know, I mean, I I remember talking to some folks saying, I'm actually gonna go make less money elsewhere. But because they offer a better health plan, right, that just makes more sense for their family situation, right? So in one way, yes, it shows that that's still an issue. But in another way, it also shows that folks also make it about wages because more recently, the feedback we've received in the exit interviews is more centered around wages. We're not seeing as much now, granted, I'm not saying that it hasn't played a factor. But at least what our folks are telling us is there's definitely more emphasis on the reasons for leaving focused on wages documented versus the health benefit, right? Now, one of the things too to kinda keep in mind as we, I guess, have this conversation about buckets is that the health fund is its own fund. And so the health fund, because of where it's at on with the with its fund balance, allows us the ability to take risks such as the one that we wanna look at doing next year, right, which is introducing an EPO plan that's separate from general fund, separate from utility fund, et cetera, right? And so I think it's important to distinguish that not all funds are created equal, and we can't use money from all funds for different things, right? So for example, we can't use money in the health fund to pay for wage. The money in the health fund can only be utilized for medical claims and expenditures associated with the health plan, right? And I think that's important distinction to make because it does create this opportunity, and I'll intentionally use the word opportunity, to treat what we wanna do with the health insurance fund somewhat in a vacuum because the impacts of what happens to that is a separate fund. Now, is there overlap between health insurance fund and all the other funds, of course? Because how the health insurance fund gets its money is from the money we allocate in the general fund, in the utility fund, in the hotel hotel occupancy tax fund for our portion for our portion of the premium. And what was happening historically was that the city wasn't transferring. I'm trying to be careful with how I word it. But the reality is what it is. I'm looking at Wesley because I'm apologizing you apologizing to you with my look. But the city wasn't transferring enough money from its general fund, from utility fund to the health insurance fund, which is ultimately what led to the decline of that health fund. Because yes, the city could very easily say, we'll pump less money to our health fund so we can keep more money in the general fund to pay folks better. But then you're not, then you end up where we were in twenty nineteen, right? With one and a half million dollars in that reserve because we weren't pumping the money that needed to be pumped to the health insurance fund. And so anyway, I know that's a long answer to your comment. But hopefully it provides a greater picture of the funds and how money kinda shifts from one to the other. But again, to your point about impact on the TMRS change, I'll hit on that when I show the slide comparing our TMRS to other cities. And so with that, if it's okay with you, I'll transition to the TMRS topic.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Yeah, please do.
So TMRS, so really quick, so TMRS is a statewide retirement system with over nine hundred and thirty member cities that offers a menu of options for member cities. It's important to note that not every city has TMRS as a retirement plan. Austin isn't TMRS, Houston's not TMRS. Dallas isn't TMRS. In San Antonio, Police and Fire isn't TMRS. Civilian employees are. They're like the only one that was grandfathered into that funky setup, by the way. But the point is, not every city is a member of TMRS. And so cities have a choice in how they wanna pursue offering retirement plans. One of the things that I think it's important to note is that the TMRS Act requires that all elements that we offer, that any of its member cities offer, be pre-funded. There are many systems across the country that don't have that requirement. And up until this last legislative session, that retirement didn't even exist with TRS or ERS in our own state, which was why folks that were members of those plans in our state had a continual battle with the legislature for additional funding and why those retirement plans, from an unfunded racial standpoint, were very poorly funded. Because those plans didn't have the requirement to pre-fund the way that TMRS does. And I'll hit more on that here in a second. But for us here, just a little bit background. So City of Victoria first joined TMRS in nineteen fifty four. What we learned in the research in April, thank you for doing the research, was that when we first joined in nineteen fifty four, not all departments were part of it, which is really weird. And so it wasn't until nineteen fifty nine, excuse me, that all city departments were part of TMRS and that the city officially merged the fire pension plan that existed at the time with TMRS. And so everybody with City of Victoria has been practically TMRS since nineteen fifty nine. And one of the also the, one of the key takeaways that I think is important too about TMRS is that all TMRS does is offer a menu of options. Each, it's up to each member city to decide which elements of this menu it wants, it can afford, it wants to change, to move, et cetera. There is movement all the time amongst the whole system as a whole, right? And so in our history, we see that. So nineteen, so even though we had existed since nineteen fifty nine, it wasn't until nineteen seventy five that the USC was adopted at a hundred percent. We didn't become a two to one city until nineteen eighty one. We didn't have a contribution rate of six percent until nineteen ninety two, right? So you can see the progression over the course of just the history of the city being with TMRS. And obviously, without even having to go back, I suspect that a lot of it had to do with the finances, right? You know, as finances were getting better for the city, it's starting adding, it started adding these elements, you know, to the plan. So what does the plan look like today, right, for the City of Victoria? So we're at a six percent contribution rate. I should have added a slide to this, but I didn't. But under the menu of options for TMRS, a city can either be a five percent, a six percent, or a seven percent. Once it ch- once a city chooses which percentage, it then picks its matching ratio. Because you can either be one to one, you could be one and a half to one, or you can be two to one. On the updated service credit part, a city can opt to have it or not. If they have it, it can either be at a hundred percent, at seventy five percent, or fifty percent. The transfer updated service credit is an on and off switch. A city either has it or it doesn't. We do. We have a repeating COLA for retirees at seventy percent. Not every city has a repeating COLA. But those that do can either have it at seventy percent, at fifty percent, or thirty percent. We also have a supplemental death benefit for actives and retirees. So in essence, it's like a life insurance. So for our active employees, which are our existing employees, that that equates to an annual's worth of salary for them. For our retirees, it's seventy five hundred dollars. Not every city offers this plan or either one of these. We do. Now, to your point about, well, how does this sort of put us compared to other cities? We were trying to find a way to add value to each of these categories and trying to come up with a comparison because it can be very difficult to compare apples to apples because it's all, it can be all over the place with out of the menu of options, what cities actually have, right? And so we decided to try and come up with a score to try and rank where we stand in relation to our retirement benefit. And the way that we did this, and Derek deserves a lot of credit. Everybody knows he's definitely more data-driven than I am. So he helped put this together for me. Now, as I mentioned, you can either be at five percent, six percent, or seven. So we attached a value score to each city that we're comparing ourselves to to match that. We also added a score on the whether you're a two to one, one oh one, et cetera, and so on and so forth. I really wanna show this simply just for transparency to kind of explain how we came up with these scores. But I think what would be more meaningful is to kinda just see where we stand in this. So using that criteria, you know, we scored a fifty seven. Every one of the cities above us is at a seven percent two to one contribution. And rightfully so, cities that are at that seven percent receive more points for that category because that is a that is a significant part of what we pay for TMRS is that is that contribution rate, right? So again, all of the cities above us have a seven percent. The cities below us scored a little less. So for example, Brian, Brian has a seventy five percent updated service credit, not a hundred percent. Bay City is actually at a five percent as an example. Corpus Christi is at a thirty percent cost of living adjustment for retirees, not seventy. Some of these cities don't have the transfer updated service credit. Some of these cities below us don't have the supplemental death benefit either. And so I think it's important just to understand that, yes, without a doubt, the biggest thing that people look at is the contribution rate. And we're not at seven percent, we're at six percent. So this kinda gives you a sense. And so one of the takeaway- And so one of the takeaways is that, and I hate to be this blunt about it, but there are cities that already have a better retirement plan than we do because they can afford it, right? And it goes without saying that those cities that have experienced that growth over the last twenty years have been able to keep up with wages and the impact on their retirement cost. Because there's a direct correlation to that, and I'll show that to you here in a minute. Now, if you're wondering, how much would it cost us, right? If we wanted to just keep everything at bay and just get up to seven percent? We'd have to pay about one point two million dollars more a year to TMRS. Just to give you a sense of that, we're already paying like six million. So that'd go up to seven point two million if we want to go up to seven percent. Just to give you a sense of the cost prohibitiveness of going up to seven percent to be at the same level as these cities above us, right? So now, when we talk about impact, I have a slide later that kind of goes into talking about how the impact is very individualized. But at an aggregate, and I guess I'll make my comments on the aggregate here because I don't really have a better slide to kind of do it at. But to your question about, you know, well, would decreasing the updated service credit, you know, move us along this line? It would. And I have another slide later that shows us dropping about three or four spots on this ranking by decreasing the updated service credit. And then the question is,
Go ahead.
And then the question becomes, you know, will we lose people, right? By this change, how will it impact our ability to fill vacancies, right? And one thing to keep in mind is that regardless of whether we change it or not, there's always going to be a city that has a worse plan than us. And one way to easy, one way to easily ascertain whether we'd be able to fill vacancies if we make a change is to look what they've done. Bay City is at five percent. They fill their vacancies, right? And so we need to be mindful of the fact that the proof is just in the existence of communities that have lesser value retirement plans, regardless of when and if we ever make a change or not. Just how there's communities that have better retirement plans than us before and even after if we make a change, right?
That was, that was the question I was going to ask. Because everybody below us on this retirement score plan had a higher wage per employee. Is that correct, close?
Well, they were part of the study that suggested that the market was up, right? We did, we didn't, we didn't, now we could, but we didn't, leading up to tonight, run any specific regression model of any kind to kind of look at what does that look like, you know?
I didn't know if there was like a wage scoring.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I'm sure Derek's already figuring it out in his head.
Would Victoria be down on the bottom on that?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
If, if we were put, if this was not a retirement score, but a wage score, and we had these same cities, where would we fit in in ranking?
Oh, I see, yeah, we'd definitely be at the, yeah, we would definitely be at the bottom of the list for sure, yeah. Hence why the data suggests that, you know, we're that far behind market, right? On the wage side. So, but let's talk about, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say that the sad part is that these benefits are invisible. You know, you look at your paycheck, you, you don't see the benefits, you don't see the, the costs. You don't see, you know, here we are in this middle of the road ranking, but you know, it's invisible. You follow, you know what I'm saying? The employees are not aware until we bring it to their attention with this discussion.
I mean, I will, I will, I will say that, you know, there, I think employees are very well aware of, of their benefits. But it certainly, there are certain aspects of the benefit that are probably just not as talked about. Updated service credit being one of them, right? I mean, we've learned through this exercise that a lot of employees didn't even know what it was or what it meant or how it worked or, you know, things like that. And that's okay. So I would say that there are elements of our benefit offerings that unless you're put in a situation that forces you to get into the weeds of it, your level of, of exposure to it is just at the surface level. And without a doubt, at the surface level, when you're just looking at TMRS, the only thing that ever gets talked about at the surface level is the seven percent, six percent aspect of it. Nobody ever delves down into the details of updated service credit or transfer updated service credit or anything else.
I would argue that and say that it would depend on whether it is a civilian position perhaps versus those that are PD, fire, EMS. I think PD, fire, and EMS are very acutely aware of updated service credit hours because of their ability to move to a different department, a different municipality. And that's something that's important to them.
Well, I mean, I would tell you.
Part of that is that they're more affected by that. Most, most employees.
And I'll get to that, and I'll get to that. But I mean, I, I mean, I could just tell you.
Because they don't promote.
Yeah, I mean, I could just tell you from my experience and my conversations with, with folks that I've had just in the last two months, there are a lot of folks even within our public safety departments that are learning about how, about the updated service credit for the first time. Now, at an aggregate, are public safety folks more acutely aware of, of shifts in the environment? A hundred percent, you know, they have the benefit of, of being structured and having an association. They have the benefit of having state leadership within those associations to be of a resource to them, to help educate them on how we compare to other cities. And so I will say, I would say that as an aggregate, without a doubt, our police and fire personnel are, are more knowledgeable of our challenges with wages, where we stand with benefits, because they just have access to a greater resource that helps keep them up to speed on that. But also, the reality that unlike civilian positions, our public safety positions, and this is an overgeneralization, but it's to make a point. Our public safety positions out of the civilian positions are really the only ones that we lose to other cities. Now, yes, executives, we, you know, move on to different cities. But if we look at Public Works, for example, you know, all of the vacancies at Public Works, we're not losing Public Works employees to another city Public Works Department. We're losing Public Works employees just to other jobs in our community or in our region, right? And so I think the fact that specifically with police and fire, their career path does have them looking at how do other cities pay? What other benefits the cities offer? Because their career path forces them to really only explore moving to a different municipality or a county sheriff's department or something to that effect, right? Versus if you're a parks maintenance worker, you, you can go work anywhere. You know, if you're an accountant in our finance department, you can go do accounting work anywhere, right? And so I think that reality, I think, also creates this environment where our police and fire folks are more acutely aware of what's going on because their career path has them just looking at other cities. But I want to talk about how much money it costs us to maintain our existing retirement benefit and the impact that it has on our budget and our rate. So every June, we receive a rate letter from TMRS. This rate letter in essence says, this is your rate for the upcoming calendar year. Because as I mentioned earlier with TMRS, it's all calendar year based, right? So we've already received the letter for what our rate would be in twenty twenty-five, which is the rate that it would be if nothing changes. That rate would be seventeen point nine six percent or roughly six point eight million dollars. Now, you're seeing this line trend up between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-five for a number of reasons. One, we started implementing the twenty twenty compensation plan in twenty twenty-one. And there is absolutely a direct correlation between paying higher wages to having a higher liability with your retirement because it's all percentage based, right? So if our employees are making more money, as they should, then the liability on the retirement side is going to go up because they're making more money. Now, you add the updated service credit that updates them for their entire career. It also increases the value of the updated service credit, right? So the big takeaway here is that we're trending up. And the big takeaway is that we're going to continue to trend up, right? Even if nothing changes, we're going to trend up. Even if something does change, we're going to trend up. Because there's a positive correlation with paying our folks more money and this rate going up, regardless of what we do or not do with the updated service credit. The other factor at play here is that TMRS goes through experiential studies every four years. Now, many of you are aware that I served on the TMRS board at the state level for six and a half years. So I get that my level of exposure and understanding of this is perhaps different than another city manager somewhere else. But, but I think that's a value of us here. And so that twenty twenty-three experiential study in essence suggested and was part of the reason why the rates went up slightly in twenty twenty-four. Because these experiential studies look at, what does your employment base look like? Is the money that you're pumping into your retirement plan sufficient to cover those liabilities? And again, the TMRS requires you to pre-fund them. So if the study suggests that we're behind in keeping up with our unfunded liabilities, TMRS is going to propose a higher rate. So this increase in rate for us over the last two or three years is due to our own fault. And again, rightfully so, right? Increasing wages, but also the results of that experiential study in twenty twenty-three. The next one will be in twenty twenty-seven. Now, to give you some very, very specific examples of what the experiential study looks at, it looks at, whoops, it looks at like expected life. Every time TMRS goes through an experiential study, expected life moves. People are living longer, which means more years of paying a monthly retirement check. So if somebody's living longer, then your liability is going up. Because now you got to come up with the cash to now pay for all those employees that are now living two, three, four years longer, which is great. But there's a dollar sign that comes with that, right? TMRS will go through another experiential study in twenty twenty-seven. This is just my opinion, take it for what it's worth. I suspect that and fully expect that in that experiential study in twenty twenty-seven, it's going to recommend another increase in rates for everybody. Because of just the changes and what's going on, right? So we foresee this rate continuing to climb up. And this is very, very important because I know that folks won't like what I, what I'm about to say. But it's not my job to say out loud what people want to hear, right? It's my job to convey if I foresee an issue brewing. And I foresee an issue brewing over the course of the next two, three years in that we will be put at a crossroads of having to be able to make a decisions on this recalibration of dollars between wages and retirement. Because this rate is only going to go up. And if I go back to the historical slide that showed an increase of a little over four hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-four, that's only going to go up. And so let's say we don't do anything. In fiscal year twenty-five, that would go up. I just blanked out Wesley, but I think it's another three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. So that one million dollar impact, or whatever it would be if we change it, you know, would be greater, right? I'm going in circles now. The big takeaway is that this rate is going up and the proposal, right? Which decreases the updated service credit would drop the rate to fourteen point two nine percent. And you could see this graphically, what that does. And you could see graphically the savings that I, that I shared earlier, right? Which was roughly a little over a million dollars. You see the shift here. Now, if we know that this rate is only going to go up because of us continuing to invest in the wages front, and my professional opinion is that the experiential study in twenty twenty-seven is going to cause it to go up again, then we need to ask ourselves, do we want this rate to climb up from what base? Do we want to, for this rate to go up at the seventeen point six nine base? Or do we want this rate to go up at the fourteen point two nine percent base? And that's why I foresee us reaching this point in the next couple of years, even if nothing changes this year, where this will become unsustainable for us. Because we don't have the growth that is generating the new revenue every year to be able to keep up with both wages and the cost impact that they reflect on the retirement side. Now, could we always cut a budget elsewhere? Hundred percent, right? You know, if council said, we'd rather cut a city operation, we can do that. So there's, you know, multitude of ways to skin the cat, as they say, right? But anyway, this is the impact on the rate. Now, let's talk a little bit about the unfunded liability and the funded racial. So our liabilities currently are roughly three hundred million. People don't talk about this number. But our liabilities that we're in essence saying that we're committing to our retirees currently is three hundred million. Of that, we have roughly thirty-nine million that is currently labeled as unfunded. That puts us at roughly eighty-four percent funded, which is really good. By decreasing the updated service credit, you could see the big impact it has on our, on our unfunded liability and the funded ratio. It drops our unfunded liability to just north of thirty-one million and increases our funded ratio to eighty-seven percent. So it would put us on a path for greater financial sustainability because it's significantly decreasing our unfunded liabilities and increasing our funded ratio and would put us in a position to better absorb the increases in the rate that I know are coming over the next two, three years and that I anticipate coming at the end of the experiential study process in twenty-seven. So this is all important. So what are the specific changes? I mentioned the adoption of a non-retroactive COLA at seventy percent. Last legislative session, TMRS took a bill to the legislative session that allowed cities to adopt a non-retroactive COLA at their existing rate only. What this does is that it actually saves some money. Now, the intent behind that legislative change had absolutely nothing to do with helping cities save money. It had more to do with allowing cities to be able to adopt a retroactive COLA again. Because a lot of cities stopped offering a retroactive COLA after the recession of two thousand and eight because it became cost prohibitive for cities to keep up with the rates because of the impact of the market at the time. And because TMRS forces you to pre-fund, when you don't have the cash to afford the rate, you're forced to reduce the benefit. And so we, TMRS has tried to find ways to make it easier for cities to enhance the benefit. And this non-retroactive feature was a part of that. But an unintended consequences for the good for everybody was that its adoption helps save some money. But it doesn't change anything. And that's why we really haven't talked about it because it's not a negative, it's not a positive or negative impact on anything other than it just, it's an, it's an, it changes the actuarial calculation that saves us some money. Now, the updated service credit is different. Obviously, there is an impact to that, so let's talk about it. So what is an updated service credit? Updated service credit increases an eligible employee's retirement benefit when the employee receives significant salary increases over their career. There's no such thing as updated service credit hours. Up service, up service, updated service credit is simply a bonus that gets deposited in each individual's retirement account every so often. And I'll, and I'll explain shortly how often that takes place. The big takeaway with this definition, and by the way, TMRS provided this definition, I didn't write it, this is coming straight from the source, is that the updated service credit helps the employee that receives significant salary increases over their career. One of the big takeaways that I hope comes out of all the efforts that I've tried to undertake to educate employees and even this conversation, is this recognition and acceptance of the facts that not every employee benefits from the existence of the updated service credit. Because not every employee, not every employee receives significant salary increases over their career. Plenty of people do, but there's a lot that don't. And so that's also why it's difficult to explain the impact of this change, proposed change, because it impacts everybody significantly different. Now, how is it calculated? Every January, an eligible employee's current account balance is compared to a hypothetical account balance. And in essence, the updated service credit sends the difference to an employee's account. This hypothetical comp balance is calculated looking at how much money the employee had earned their prior three-year average salary and applies it over the duration of their city career. Had contributed at the city's current contribution rate and accounts for a three percent interest annually addition to that. So for example, if you have an employee that. has been here their whole career, right? And throughout the course of that career, they've successfully progressed and become an executive with the organization, right? Let's say this employee has gone from making $30,000 a year to $100,000 a year. We know that our matching ratio is at 6%, 2 to 1, right? That's 18%. Obviously, 18% of 100 grand is 18,000. Is significantly greater than the 18% of 30 grand. And if that employee has been with us for 20 years, the updated service credit or bonus assumes that that employee would receive $18,000 a year into their account for the entire duration of that 20-year career. Now, not, again, not everybody progresses through the organization to that same extent. And that's why the impact or the value of this updated service credit varies significantly from person to person. Uh, but that's just one quick example of, of sort of how that kind of works. Now, on the positive side, right, the updated service credit is intended to reward an employee's longevity, is intended to reward an employee's loyalty, right, to our organization by financially rewarding their retirement by progressing through their career here, right? Now, because we have the transfer updated service credit, we actually are also doing that for folks that have also worked elsewhere. So for example, if we have somebody that comes into our organization having worked 10 years somewhere else and they've worked for us for that three-year period, we're updating their retirement account to reflect as if that retirement account had received that value for the three years they were with us, but also for the 10 years that they worked somewhere else. This is a valuable recruitment tool and I wouldn't recommend touching it. Because it's an extremely valuable tool, because not every city has a transfer updated service credit. But in essence, the transfer updated service credit is exactly what the updated service credit year, what the updated service credit is, but accounts for years that somebody might have worked somewhere else. So again, what that amount of the updated service credit is that hits every January depends on this hypothetical comparison of where they are now in comparison to their entire career. These are some very simple examples that TMRS provided that simply just show the hypothetical account balance of 100 grand, an actual account balance of 80, and showing the difference of 20,000. And that updated service credit bonus would equate to 20 grand. Because that's how much the formula would say you're owed at that 100%. And what we're suggesting and what the proposal is, is to decrease that in half. We're not, we're not suggesting eliminating any retirement feature of the TMRS. We're simply suggesting that the value of this bonus be decreased in half. So in this scenario, instead of that being a $20,000 bonus deposit into this particular employee, it'd be a 10. Now, there's obviously an impact to that. And I'll get to that here in a second on the individual side. But on the aggregate, you know, to April's question earlier, it does drop us down, right? I mean, there is no doubt that making a change to the updated service credit shifts our ranking on where we sit in comparison to these other cities, right? I mean, it would be foolish for me or for anybody to expect that any decrease in, or a change in the retirement plan wouldn't affect, you know, where we sit in comparison to these other cities. But as you can see, even with the change, there are still some cities that will forever always have a better retirement plan than us. And then cities that will have a lesser valued retirement plan. So the question becomes about priorities, and I'll get to that in a second. But on the individual side, it truly varies by individual. Because the employee that I just described, right, that started at $30,000 a year and over 20 years progressed to making $100,000, that's not everybody's story. We have employees that start making $30,000 a year and retire making $36,000 a year. And so the value of that updated service credit for that employee is obviously mathematically not as significant as the employee that progressed up to making six figures, right? And there's of course, a lot of scenarios in between, right? I mean, that's just some extreme examples of sorts. But, but because that impact is very individualized, is why we've encouraged employees to speak directly to TMRS. Because they'd be the ones that would be well-versed and better-versed in trying to explain it and understand the impact. And we had Anthony Mills with TMRS here in person on June 11th. And they plan to come back on the 11th and 12th. And we've already opened up opportunities for employees to sign up to speak to them. So they can understand what their impact is. And more importantly, they can potentially be educated on how to make up some of those differences. Because one of the things that's hard to account for is that at the end of the day, this is a math situation. So in the example that I gave earlier, for example, right, we decrease the updated service credit that employee would receive $10,000 less in their account. TMRS can help potentially describe how to make up that $10,000. Because we had a real-life situation where an employee met with Anthony, who was going to have a significant impact to this. But realized that if they worked a few extra months beyond what they were envisioning, they could make up that difference. Or they've learned through this process that it makes sense for them to wait until January or until the birthday to retire to maximize their retirement. So at the end of the day, a more educated employee is going to make better decisions on the timing of their retirement. You know, I spoke to another employee, for example, that was looking to retire in a particular November. But thanks to this process has realized, I ought to just wait till January. Because when the mathematical calculation on your monthly retirement check is based off of years of life that you have left, it becomes a greater monthly check if that number of years is lessened by one, right? So there's a lot of different things at play here, which is why the best thing is for folks to simply just talk to TMRS. However, again, I'm not oblivious. I'm not foolish to the reality that this will have a negative effect on some employees, but not all. And so we've decided that to at least help mitigate for the folks whose impact would be minimal, let's offer an opportunity for an employee to start up a 457 deferred compensation retirement plan if they don't have one. Or we help increase the balance in their plan by giving them the option to pick that during open enrollment coming up in the fall. Now, similar to the impact of updated service credit, even this one contribution and its impact varies widely across the organization. Because for an employee who is experiencing a significant negative impact to their retirement with this change in updated service credit, this $500 isn't going to do much to help offset that impact. But if you're an employee that is not impacted, not impacted at all by the change or very minimally impacted, putting you on a path to helping you start up a 457 is actually going to yield you a net positive result once you get to retirement age. And so again, the impact just varies widely depending on the number of employees. Now, I should have said this earlier, but we know that statistically only half about of our employees receive updated service credits. And that only about half of those, half of that half is what maybe we would qualify as significant. Because again, you have to experience those significant pay increases over your career to get the max reward of the updated service credit, and that's not the story of every city employee. In any case, we're also offering the opportunity for employees to meet with representatives from Mission Square. So that they can, if they're not familiar with the 457, can become familiar to make an educated decision once that open enrollment comes in the fall. And they'll also be here in mid-July for appointments. Now, I want to now transition to talking about the alternative option, which doesn't touch updated service credit. Which is a viable option, but comes with pros and cons, right? And I think it's important for me to walk you through the pros and cons of these options. So that you can be better educated and in a better position to make a wiser decision on what you think is best for the organization that you're responsible for. So under the proposed, right, we've talked about it. Decrease updated service credit to 50%, adopt the non-retroactive. We've talked about how that lowers our rate to 14.29%, how it lowers our unfunded liability from 39 million to 30 million. We've talked about how that includes a 3% across the board for all civilians, 5% across the board for police and fire, and so on, so forth. The alternative keeps the updated service credit at 100%. We still adopt the non-retroactive because that does produce a little bit of savings. Hence why even under that option, our unfunded liability drops by about a million and a half. But that rate would be 17.24%, which is still a little bit less than the one that was proposed, but only about half, half a percentage point. Under this scenario, for a civilian employee, nothing changes. Under this scenario, a civilian employee would still receive the 3% across the board, would still get to 90% of market in fiscal year 26. Under the alternative option, because now we have less cash, right? Because we're not producing the savings from reducing the updated service credit and the savings from decreasing the rate. For public safety, it would be a 3% across the board instead of 5. And it'd be a 1% step in 25 instead of one and a half. And in fiscal year 26, we would reach 87% of market instead of 90. So it's still an increase in pay for police and fire under this alternative option, but just not as much because we're not producing the savings from reducing the updated service credit. Again, still a viable option, right? And quite frankly, the only reason why it's even a viable option is because of where we ended up landing with what I shared on Friday, which was maximizing shifting dollars from INS to MNO and so on, so forth. Had you asked me a month ago if there was any opportunity for a viable alternative option, I would have told you no. Because at that time, we thought our NTAV was going to be in the negative. Right? So there has been a positive outcome that has come from this realization that our NTAV might actually be in the positive, which is a viable alternative option. But again, pros and cons with the options, right? So what does that look like? For police and fires, since they're the only ones that would be impacted by the alternative option. So again, current pay, and I'll focus on starting pay, right? So current pay for police is $50,970. Under the proposed, which is 90% of market, that would shift to $56,466. Under the alternative option at 87%, it would go up to $54,583. So it'd still go up. And we would still make strides, you know, in trying to keep up with market to some extent. But just not as aggressive, I guess, is the, is the, is the right word to utilize to describe that option. On the fire side, starting pays at 50, under the proposed, which is 90%, it'd go up to 54. Under the 87%, it'd be slightly less. Just to give you a sense of what the impact would be on pay for police and fire under the alternative option. Now, cost-wise, it actually increases our fiscal year 2025 net cost by a little over $400,000. But again, that's because we're not producing the additional savings that would come by reducing the updated service credit. And we're able to absorb this additional 400-some thousand dollars. Because now we don't have to be as mindful about fiscal year 26 because of, because it's just different now, right? Without a doubt, under the alternative option, the level of confidence on being able to adopt, or not adopt, but implement the fiscal year 26 recommendation decreases significantly. Because by not decreasing the TMRS rate, that TMRS rate that we'll get next June, that would go into effect January 2026, I guarantee you, is going to go up again. And in the absence of not being able to shift money from INS to MNO next year, and in the absence of not having that cushion that we have in sales tax, we're going to be forced next summer to reevaluate whether we can even afford to do fiscal year 26. That's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. We've, that's the way we've gone about doing pay programs historically. We take them one year at a time, right? But I think it's important to know that under the alternative option, we're having to use up more cash in fiscal year 25. And it increases the level of uncertainty around what happens in 2026. But you might be okay with that, and that's okay. So this is just a different, I know there's a lot of numbers, but this just shows that difference or puts the side-by-side financial comparison on what's proposed versus the alternative, you know, you can see the difference between the 400 and 2,000 for fiscal year 25 and the 838. You can see that on the total over two years, you could see the impact of the alternative. And again, it's all about money, right? When you, when we, when we aren't producing that additional savings by reducing the TMRS rate, it's just more money that we're on the hook for, right? And that's okay. But that's what that looks like. And so in a nutshell, the task for you is to think about the proposed, as it's been developed, plus the alternative. Again, both viable options, both options would produce improved pay for everybody. But they're different. You know, to recap, the proposed has public safety at 5% and one and a half step for fiscal year 25 and reaching 90% of market in fiscal year 26. Drops the updated service credit from 100% to 50% to produce the savings to be able to pay for it. Now, I think it's part of my responsibility to also document the next points. It lowers the TMRS rate and it lowers the unfunded liability. And under this scenario, as your city manager, I have high expectation of being able to do this increase in the pay program over two years. And I very intentionally, I have this backwards. What's supposed to be this bullet is that I don't have as much confidence in the implementation of fiscal year 26 under the alternative option. But under the proposed, I do because of what I just described. And so that's why the next bullet, right? The implementation confidence is high for fiscal year 26 under the proposed because we're lowering our unfunded liability for TMRS, lowering the rate. And then for the outer years, right? Because again, we would still have to come back in fiscal year 27 and address tenure and longevity for civilian employees. At that point, because of the uncertainty of the experiential study in 2027, I show that as a medium level of confidence to be able to do that. Under the alternative option, we keep the updated service credit at 100%, but public safety gets less of a pay bump, but there's still a pay bump. But under this scenario, we keep the similar TMRS, we keep similar unfunded liability. And there's a high expectation of significant increase to that rate over the next two years. And so my level of confidence under the alternative option decreases significantly. Because now it goes from high to being moderate, that's a better word versus medium. It goes from being high to moderate. Because if we don't make the decision to decrease the TMRS rate now, it's going to, we're going to see an increase in the TMRS rate in fiscal year, going into fiscal year 26, which decreases my level of confidence of being able to do a decent pay program in fiscal year 26, which then also then lessens my level of confidence in being able to do what we need to do for civilian employees in fiscal year 27 and beyond. Again, both options are viable options. I think from my perspective, it just boils down to your interpretation of the implications and the value that you place on the implications of the proposed changes. But I will say that if we go with the alternative option, I guarantee you, the city will be put in a position at some point over the next two or three years to have to have another conversation about recalibrating, what we're talking about recalibrating now. Because it is not sustainable, and that is my official position as your city manager, to keep up with pay wages and at the same time, keep up with the impact that that has on the TMRS rate. We don't have that level of revenue coming in every year to be able to do that. And whether it's now or later, we will have to make that hard decision. And it's your decision to determine whether that's something you want to take up now or take a certain level of risk later when that time comes. And in essence, that's where I'm at. And that's what I have. As I alluded to at the very beginning of this conversation, on July 16th, you'll have an opportunity to provide that direction to us at a meeting. And then you're familiar with the rest of the calendar, proposed budget in early August, public hearings, et cetera. And then official adoption of the budget in September. The pay increases would go into, regardless of which option is picked, the pay increases would go into effect on October 1st. And then we have the open enrollment coming in the fall. And so those one-time contributions to either an HSA, that's a misspelling, I apologize for that, or a 457 would come in January of 2025. And that's, and that's what I got for you tonight. I plan on sending you a copy of this presentation as well as some backup documentation. In case you're interested in, in kind of taking a deeper dive into some of the data, I will advise that it is not recommended. We can talk about sort of high-level impact on positions the way that we just did about police and fire. But we need to be sensitive to the fact that these discussions have employees attached to them. And so it's important for us to have And so it's important for us to have these conversations at the position level, not the people level. I think it's very important for me to verbalize. Because when you receive the data, it'll be very easily to automatically think, oh, and I'll pick on Ken. But it'll be very easily to kind of say, okay, Public Works Director, the data says this, oh, well, that's Ken. I don't know, right? And we need to really separate. You're welcome.
That's a pretty heavy picking on there.
Hey, I'm just continuing it. You're going to retire anyway. So what's the point? Anyway, so, anyway, that's where I'm at. You know, again, I know that's a lot of information. You know, I'll send you the presentation as well as any backup documentation that I have so you can review that at your own leisure. We're obviously available to answer any questions or address any concerns that you have, you know, from now until the next meeting. And happy to answer anything else or address anything else now, but that's all I got for now.
I imagine that that TRMS retirement thing is not going to be a unique discussion just for Victoria based upon the numbers. For other communities are going to be dealing with some of this, I imagine.
Oh, 100%, 100%, yeah. And, you know, the cities that significantly increased pay over the last four years, which we know they did, right? Because we're further behind market. You know, their TMRS rates are going to go up significantly as well. And we actually have access to every city's TMRS rate letter. So we could even in theory pull up some of these rates for these other cities to show how these rates are going up for every other city. But again, for them, they can absorb that additional expense because those cities are growing. Their tax base is growing. Ours isn't. So it's difficult to compare ourselves to a community who does, can reliably rely on that additional revenue every year.
Until they stop.
I'm sorry?
Until they stop growing.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I've got a couple of questions if nobody else does. This one-time $500 deferred compensation that you're proposing under the original proposal, can an employee continue to contribute to that over the course of his employment?
Yes, 100%.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, in the alternate proposal, is that still in the alternate proposal? Or is it taken out of the alternate proposal, that $500?
That's a good question. I quite frankly had not thought of that. It could. But the only reason why we had it in there was because of the change to updated service credit. But there would be nothing stopping us from keeping it in there. And we can certainly look at contemplating that scenario. Because regardless of how we slice it, there's going to have to be a conversation about TMRS at some point, right? And so even if we keep the updated service credit at 100% under the alternative option, it probably would behoove us and probably be smart of us to start encouraging employees to start a 457. Because they would have one or two years, you know, ahead of the curve if the city's put in a position of having to reassess TMRS two or three years from now. So it probably would be wise for us to do it anyway as a proactive measure to help beef up an employee's retirement as much as possible in anticipation of what I forecast being a tough conversation in the next couple of years. So that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
You said that the updated service credit would go from 100% to 50%, correct? And is there a possibility to go to a 75% in it? So what difference was that making? Or can you do that study?
We do have, you can correct me if I'm wrong Wesley, we do have the rate, right? We do know what the rate would be if we decreased it to 75%. But we have not run the, either program or just any program based off of the savings produced under that scenario. But that certainly is an option to explore a scenario that decreases the updated service credit to 75% because it would produce some savings, just not as much. And if council would like for us to run a scenario to that end, we can certainly do that.
I personally would.
Wesley's like, oh, that's a lot of work. I believe in you.
I'm being naive.
Change it 50 to 75. Same Excel spreadsheet.
I personally would like that and get that study to the Fire Association and the Victoria Police Association Presidents so they'd have a look at it. Because bottom line, they're the ones who are talking to the troops. They're the ones on the front lines. They're the ones who are deciding for their group if it's good or bad. And basically, I understand that we have to make sure, I mean, decide if it's good or bad for the city. But we're talking about employee retention. So that would be something that we need to know their opinion and their... Does that make sense, guys?
It 100% makes sense to explore the 75% as an option. Like I said, we just hadn't run that scenario. Because again, up until two weeks ago, there would have been no other viable option, right? And so we focused on keeping it at 100% for sake of time that it takes to put it together in preparation for today's discussion. But without a doubt, it's worth the exercise and the time to explore what that would look like. I can't make any commitments to what impact that has on anything that you've seen tonight because I suspect it would have to just look completely different from either option that you've seen tonight in order to make the math work. But we can do it. But we can do it.
I had the same question. So that was an excellent thought in that regard. What were the budgetary implications from a 75? So thank you.
I'm sure there'll still have to be adjustments, but maybe not as great.
We'll see.
Sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
One, I want to tell you thank you because I know that this was a lot to put together. And I appreciate all the time and effort that went into it. And it's not lost on me that you're presenting something that ultimately would impact you. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
My next question is regarding retirement and retirement contributions. Is retirement voluntary or is it something that's required of all employees? And if it is required of all employees, is there an option for us to make that and opt-in or opt-out for cost savings? Because it is something that's not important to all employees, just like healthcare is not important to all employees. And could we see some beneficial savings there that might be applied?
No. So TMRS has to be equally applied to every single employee. We can't differentiate. We can't leave it up to an employee to decide. We make those decisions. You make those decisions. And they apply equally to everybody. Now, your comment though does make me recall something that can also be true under the proposed option. Because I think you hit the nail on the head in that the reason why this can be somewhat of a... What's the word? Divisive is too strong of a word. But why it can be a situation where some folks may be in favor and some not is because you're right. You know, every individual's situation is different. An individual might prefer to have the extra cash in their paycheck today and might be okay with, you know, the lessened impact later. For a different employee, it might be different. For a different employee, they might be okay with where they're at now. And they're not willing to sort of, I guess, sacrifice for lack of a better word, you know, the change. We can't move the lever with TMRS. It has to be equally applied for everybody. However, an employee can make a decision for themselves. Now, I'll make my comments solely based off of police and fire because I want to be sensitive to the fact that a 3% increase to our employee making $14 an hour, they need that money to put food on the table. They won't have the option that I'm about to verbalize to you. But for folks that, you know, on the police side, on average, police officers under the proposed would get about a 10% pay increase. Fire would be about an eight. In that scenario, there is some extra cash there that a police officer or firefighter could choose to deposit into a 457 account. You know, all we're saying is we're increasing the wage. We're not telling an employee what to do with that increase in wage. Now again, for a civilian employee and others, I am very sensitive to the fact that that's not an option for them. But for employees that would see an increase of, you know, more than 5, 6, 7% over two years, they wouldn't theory have cash that they could have a conversation about with their family to decide how much of that additional cash do they need to keep up with inflation and other factors, putting food on the table, et cetera. Or may be able to shift some of that dollar to a 457. So in that scenario, an employee has a choice. For the employee that does want to be more mindful about their future retirement impact, there's nothing stopping them from taking some of the cash in the increased wage to do just that. It would just be through a 457 mechanism and not through TMRS.
Ultimately, though, I'd like to see it where it didn't impact the updated service credit. Are you talking about updating that to the 50% and then using that, those funds? Is that what you're saying? Decreasing that, cutting that, the 50% and then the additional funds that they see? Is that what you're talking about? Because I'd like to see a way for them to say, okay, I want to have some more power over theirs. And so I just want to make sure that we're aligned with what you're saying.
Yeah, and what I'm suggesting is that on the TMRS side, there is no influence there, right? I mean, the TMRS is what it is. The savings that would be produced by decreasing the updated service credit are being spread out through the implementation of this pay program, right? So for example, out of the $3.2 million, 65% of that's going to public safety. So our $3.2 million pay program is significantly prioritizing police and fire by having 65% of that 3.2 apply to them. But the data backs that up, right? The data backs up that police and fire market has increased significantly over the last four years, right? It's impossible to pick an employee and say that a saving generated by decreasing their personal updated service credit is being tied to any particular pay increase. Because again, some employees aren't seeing a negative impact because they don't experience those significant pay increases, right? So one way to look at this, just offering up a tidbit, I guess, for reflection, is that if we know that the folks that benefit the most from the updated service credit are the folks that experience those significant pay bumps, we know, this is an oversimplification. We know that that's leadership team members, executive team members, and police and fire. Because comparatively speaking, police and fire, in the absence of a promotion, still receive a significant pay bump because police and fire historically have always received pay bumps as priority over civilian employees. And this pay program does the same, right? So we, so one way to look at it would be that if police and fire, again, this is an oversimplification, overgeneralization. But if police and fire, if we had to pick subgroups, is a subgroup that is impacted greater by this decrease in updated service credit, this is also the subgroup that is getting the highest pay bump over the same duration. So a reflection point could be weighing this reality that, again, we can't do it on an individual basis, but as a generality, there is an impact to retirement for police and fire. But the offset is that they're getting the greater significant pay bump as part of the proposal, which is why keeping the 100% updated service credit as is is only impacting the wages on police and fire and not everybody else. Anyway, just another perspective for you to ponder on.
The TRMS representatives that are going to be here to talk with the employees, you said July 12th?
11th and 12th, I believe.
And they were here June 11th, correct?
July 11th. Yeah, you just confused me in my head. But yeah, June 11th and then 11th and 12th.
Just making sure that every employee that this would affect would have the opportunity to meet with them. I don't know how long it takes.
That's what we're trying to achieve. You know, TMRS up until this point, I think, has committed to sending two or three staff members. And they're willing to send more depending on how, I guess, the demand is on the signups.
Since this is so individual, it sounds like.
Yeah, because it's even impossible for us to even say, hey Wesley, it's going to impact you. You should go talk to TMRS. I can't even do that. I got to tell Wesley, hey, I don't even know if it's impacting you or not. The only way you can really know for sure is if you go talk to TMRS.
If they're working, do they have the ability to meet with them? If they're on shift, if they're...
Yeah, and we can certainly make that a point. And I'll be sure to make it very clear to specifically the chiefs to ensure that that takes place.
Thank you.
Well, certainly, this is, you know, quite a bit of information, a good starting point. I know there's more to come. You know, just a couple of things I'd say, and I want to say this, and this is not just paying lip service. You know, I think all of us would love to see, let's get to full market value. Let's keep the 100%. Let's rock along and, you know, as best we can. Let's get higher on those rankings. But the economic realities, I think, as you pointed out or something, we just have to figure out what's the best we can do and what are priorities. I do think it's very important, and I appreciate you pointing this out, that when we look at this, we're looking at this from a position basis, not an individual basis, okay? So just like you don't draft job descriptions to match an individual, you draft job descriptions to match what is the organization need. And then you make sure you've got the right individual. In this situation, I think we have to evaluate this based on positions that are the overall good of the organization, not considering, okay, this individual's here, this individual's there. Because we're making decisions that are going to be more than just who's here right now. We're making decisions that are going to be impactful, you know, down the road. And then finally, and I know we all know this, but at the end of the day, our analysis needs to be, what is the issue we're trying to address? And which one of these is going to have the most impact on those issues? If the issue we're trying to address, which I think it is, is recruitment and retention, then which of these options, whether it's these two or the third one that we're going to get, which one of those do we feel like is going to have the best impact on those issues for the overall good of the city? And I think that's really what it's going to boil down to. And we may have different opinions on that. I know a lot of people do. But ultimately, you know, that's really what we're trying to do is figure out of the options that we have, economic viable options, which ones do we think are going to have the best impact? Not just short-term, but long-term for the city. So, all right, well, thank you. You said an hour, we went to two. I would have actually taken the overs on two. No, listen, and I mean that jokingly because this was a lot of really good information. There was a whole lot in here. We do want to see this. Please send it to us because I know that there'll be some follow-up questions. But I think you did a very good job of setting this out and providing some good information. And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Certainly. So I understand that we do have a brief executive session?
Not two hours.
You're right. Let's see, so it is 8:04 and we will take probably a 10-minute break. And so, well, it's 8:05 now. So let's be back at 8:15. Ms. Hilbert?
City Council recessed for executive session on the second day of July. Subject matter is executive session deliberation on Texas Government Code 551.087, 551.072, and 551.071.